Mary, if you want to make a lot of order to this section first. Since we had our. Here for the first time.
Yes, okay. I was going to break. That's all. There's a opening at. Why is that?
Whether it is due by the United States of America, two republics which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For all, I do say this right, I pledge allegiance to thee, as one state under God, one indivisible.
Uh, the only announcement that I have is. Council that we have a whole. We had a very good trip planning then this past Saturday on the Chatsworth Community Park. I particularly wanted to thank. Mayor Taylor, a lot of family out, has lead one of our board members, uh, Chris Coe and the Kenneth. Our careers well, so we appreciate that. There's another all project scheduled with the West Coast troops that uh, over there that's going to be the center. So we will plan to rest in our trees today. Remember we've got a nine thousand dollar rate to say enforcement just helping to help these. For a quarter of a decade. And then helps us with the deals. Yes, pretty much. May I remind you that. We have the breakfast we said in it. They're coming up in December, Saturday, December the sixth from. Where are the times? Nine, remember nine, nine eleven? And nine eleven, I'm sorry, I don't have a clock in front of me, what will make this for you? Uh, we're gonna actually grow. The size of thirteen to bring ten, so we're gonna be putting the ten under the front area. Uh, according by eight ten, I mean Fire Department has agreed as usual to go ahead and make the hotcakes and sausages. And then throw in some bacon there for us. We have again the Keter High School wires are going to come and stay for us. Um, we're gonna get you a sponsor that we're gonna be able to not only provide a gift, a sentimental gift to our child, but also we can have feedbacks and we will be wrapping off eighty questions. You did awesome. It's on us, uh, Saturday, December the sixth. There's a lot of that to support.
Well, guys.
Yeah.
Seven ten, I'll have that sent to the city council and it'll be managed by one of us. Seven ten, uh, so the mayor, he members the council, consider every group of the citizens. Two hours. Just prove it. City council needs minutes for whatever others twenty twenty five and approve of.
I did fix that. Yes, I put seven fourteen, so it was seven fourteen and then seven fifteen at this time.
I'm over who goes to be.
Want to have a second? I was prepared to add. The members of the. Receive considering that building effects of the city council place.
So as a council where uh, we had a resignation from Mr. Harvey Berger on City Council Place One. Heard of the spot, council at your last meeting accepting his resignation from the city council. Testable government code allows the council to appoint a vacancy until the next general election. In our case, next general election is going to be in May of twenty twenty six. Uh, I couldn't even see enough, this position was already done for that general election, in May of twenty twenty six as it is. However, you can also think, wow. Not fill the position and just let the voters vote on it in May of twenty twenty six. However, you know the risk that for some reason you have another council member that ends up having to resign from the council under the new state laws now, you're not gonna be able to appoint anyone, so we should have some horror issues. Uh, challenges between now and the next general election. Uh, so my recommendation to council leader, you consider building that position. You direct the staff to put out applications in the form of public, which we did, put on social media, on our website. We'll let someone take some call. We did receive two applications which you should have, the states that you have.
Yes, sir.
You should have in front of you. Uh, we received an application from a Mr. Devin Zacharias who is here as well as Mr. Ricky Jones who also here. Uh, expressing an interest in building that position. Uh, you're allowed to uh, go ahead and ask questions of the applicants out here in the session. Or if you will not be able to go into closed session to ask questions of the applicants. But you cannot limit any deliberations in the out here of the session and then sit on the session maybe. If that happens, you're out here in the session. Uh, the states that were here gave a form of, please gentlemen, our residents, uh, the city leaders. The question both. Questions to be, uh, that's all I have.
So we play the order which we receive, so we'll start with Devon. Your last announcement, bang, that's it.
Devin Zacharias, address two four oh one, hundred.
Oh, wow.
Two four oh one, hundred. Right at this room. Yes, that's right. Yes, yes. We got a way. I'm not, I'm not being, so we're here to test.
Let's build a doctor's shop and so on.
So the four places on there are three, one on the left, two on the right, two on the left, one on the right. So my place is school. Uh, I'm vice president of Western Highways, we build traffic and toll trucks. drivers, city industry, and a lot of sponsored operating services. Here in Shreve. So you feel like this is like this, I'm sort of. Served as select chairman, first of society, I'm here in Texas, and various other non-complete church. I'm very serious. Hold on. I have, okay. So, uh, okay, yeah. Try to do a little bit of a step back on a couple of, we have babies. We're perfect, it's all bad, so. Uh, well, I think. My parents were very involved in city. City related stuff, county related stuff, when I was growing up, it's a caution here. Here, set in here, so it's not to be a little thing that I should not be who I am today, it's because I watched my adult parents get involved. And here they get matured. And back into society, so trying to do the same thing. Help myself with my kids.
I didn't think your background with anything. Some of our decisions are that we have to make.
So, so my story is, is that especially with all my work endeavors, we underproven some of the deliver. And we turn lunchbox into breakfast. So there's things that uh, you need to fall by because of my experience with consultant management, development. That I see a lot of things, not necessarily the, I would say, but I see in a different manner. Uh, I believe that meditation, meditation is extremely important. And so that's why I push and the three comments that I'm part of. I don't know, I've seen maybe different perspective, but also, also someone that supports a vision of the city itself.
I don't know, I don't know.
Oh, yes. I think the rest of us are being. Act early. Sure. Older children, sure. So I would just. Yeah, I think that's a benefit, actually, you know, it's, I'm not, I'm not young, but I'm not old, I'm just somewhere in the middle, I've got babies and. So it's important to me that the area is open and free and it's. Well, there's good or bad on life, you should be involved in meetings, so, and what I tell everybody, I'm going to do this for. Okay. Okay. Play over the numbers. Yeah.
Charles.
Hello, Mayor Castle, first I want to say it's good to see somebody else other professional interested in joining the council, I think that's really. Uh, and I'm sorry to say that, uh, about me, uh, Ricky Jones, one five, one four two, South County Road. Um, so I previously lived and just previously served on the city council there. I'm currently on the training zone commission for thirty. I'm married for thirteen years, I have two boys, uh, thirteen and eight. Um, and I initially should have joined in the council because I liked being involved with a lot of work coming west and uh, specifically what I think I would be valued because I am only getting council status, I think I grew. Awkward amount of balance on the council to have the representation on my growth status of the county. Um, professionally, I'm a vice president of operations for a private investment agency, so I have a lot of public safety knowledge, background, experience, and that's something I'm very passionate about. And there's, there's several things that I'm interested in for our community and topics that I'm willing to bring up if I'm, if I'm chosen, like. Uh, maybe some enhancements to trash service, looking at costs, uh, for some permits, like accessory buildings, things like that, there's things I'm interested. And topics that I'm willing to bring up to be involved in. Um, but uh, either way, ultimately, I want to serve where there to be. Uh, so if you all decide to appoint in the council, I would still be that blessing, but if not, uh, I'm really for a commitment as well, I want to serve.
Question your.
Yeah, I got, I got to cheat here because I got to hear yourself say so, so how, how would your experience be compared? Or how did it, what would it be for us? Yeah, I, you know, and uh, you already have some insurance services, but I think that the public really doesn't understand the, you know, the cost and really the operations surrounding the mess and, you know, uh, when I first moved here, it was, uh, I came, you know, right after I had moved here, I was like, wow, Marty, like, I want to a meeting because there was some discussion surrounding in the public about uh, wanting to knock fun, just entire part of the service that counts down as well, confusion about the public about that and how it works. So uh, obviously that experience and having that knowledge of how those things work and the things that are is beneficial. Uh, but similarly, uh, I, I'm just, I'm someone that's trying to make everybody feel comfortable, I was, I'm not afraid to ask questions, so even if it's something that nobody wants to ask, I'll always ask questions. Uh, I'm stickler for uh, attention to detail, so uh, and I'd like to listen to the public, in fact, try to filter through a lot of that noise. Really, right, uh, I'm a fiscal conservative, uh, I was very heavy. Uh. Vocal in a lot of the things and questioning and trying to make sure that what we're doing was the right thing for us.
I, I mean, I remember you very well on the Justice City Council, all in the storm, getting around it. And uh, it was a nice weather there and I was always. Watch the videos and uh, there and I could tell the president's pipe video was a special link, that's where I was. Very, that's hoping. It all, it had been on the DNC, but he went above and came off last year with Brad from Santa. You were one of the. Uh, the, 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 the. And you stepped up.
Yeah, I was, I was there.
So.
He's there.
Yeah, he's there.
You're there.
Yeah, so you, you were our, our good representative there, that I went here and I heard you did outstanding job. And I think that.
Play.
You won.
He's looking at our last time.
You won my role there.
And we know he's been on the fly.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm very active with quality, I suppose, with always did, I mean, so we don't even know we have that. Um, thank you very much. Uh, I look forward to seeing you, you know, shy and prove yourself to us, but I'm just, uh, wouldn't make it sure the right person at this stage to be on the council.
Thank you.
Full stretch.
I mean, I, I agree, I think this is one of the tougher decisions we've had to make. Uh, like, you like your two-year constitution, your standing, the fact that you're a member of the board for the city as well. And I, I. But I would encourage you not to be discouraged, you're just within, and there are many other things that we have in the city that. You need help with other boarder things that are.
One of the things I was going to ask. And previously is if he's not chose, and if we'd be willing to stay, because then we would have, if he chose him, there's a voting on DNC at that.
Right, and policies.
Yeah, he's already. Oh, okay, I didn't really, I didn't really. So not easy. I would hold that.
Yeah, I know we're getting appointed now, but if you are, yes, then we'll get a DNC over. And we have a great issue. I, I, I don't worry about anything, they really are able to, uh, get to look at each track of the, they hold the focus. People, right, and very proud of who gets someone. The DNC board, they would be trust and easily go to their connections, of course, we ask our questions as well, but you can trust that they already been.
So in any of the board, I think we are asking you to prepare that all our partner are two really well, and this is. Any other questions?
So. That's one of the. So.
How many questions do you have, Joe? Let's go to the.
Number seven. Last one. See that? Uh, I suppose. Looking at Devon's resume, you actually got to probably do very well on the DNC, I think you. Haven't had much to offer here.
Yeah.
So, Mayor, we can have just a quick pause if you give Ricky a big. We have the states that are fixed, four day man, Ricky, do full of line, but we can have you join for the rest of the meeting as an early member of the city council.
So the training is. That's.
No. I can see, that's what I can see.
I'm not from up here, I'm scared. I'm not, I'm not.
That's what we think of here. That develops. You have your.
Oh.
Sorry. The car. And we, it, it does. Probably. So the thing, uh.
I'm, I'm.
Not always good, it's just. Well, definitely. What point you would like to. You're trying to.
I, I guess you have to get even older, I guess.
Thank you. The last one we have. It's very hard. It's not. You also, are we going to maybe not sign? Is that what you can come to each other? You're a good job star. But so it's like some.
Yeah, you do that. Yes. I'm into better. I got it. I have. Get it. Yeah. This is like a repressing. We have to do it. Guys. You guys are your horrible. We're like, I listen. Yeah, we're walking here.
More freaking channels I got. More seriously, I have a dead sar. If we're.
No, no, no. It's sort of a state of. We have a long. So what I actually. I'm glad I heard you, this is your brother, he wants me to run to there, he's got a hundred and five years. To have a post. And not, uh, he's sad, but then I really. Very good experience. First of, first of. And we like. We're very hard. The DNC, yeah. We'll see, we'll take it out. We're taking care of it, we're taking care of it, maybe I'll make it out, can you hear it? You're. Come here, gonna be more in football game. We spent all, I think, there's a lot. But sure, I was watching football. They can run deep. Second, we answer myself. Cause I try and.
Have you known anyone else? You're in the board. You're highly.
We'll get different. Oh. If you're. And I'm just. Yes, certainly. Of course, absolutely. Your, your eyes will love the picture when you do it.
It's okay, we can search for the mental.
Okay, so you want to. Have that. Okay. Very good.
I need a picture.
Council. Yeah.
A second.
Y'all want a picture before? Yeah, we're, we're gonna get a picture here, just that.
Can we do it, like, somewhere? But this is the style. How about tables there?
Well, it's finished right inside, but yeah, there's. There's a guy who wants. Yeah, I'm gonna try to get it from here. We have some software.
He don't want to go inside.
What about first? Oh, I didn't know we were all. Yeah, so do a photo off here, it's just a huge, huge score here, so if you guys stand behind him.
Yeah.
Part of my.
What is that?
No, you don't have to do that there.
Stay part of your.
No, like, no matter. I'm, I'm a work.
So, Rachel Brackley.
Okay.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
I, Ricky Jones.
I, Ricky Jones.
Do solemnly swear, Harper.
Do solemnly swear. Or.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of City Council Place One.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of City Council Place One.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability to serve.
And will to the best of my ability to serve.
Protect, defend, and protect the Constitution and laws.
Protect and defend the Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state so help me God.
And of this state so help me God.
I, Ricky Jones.
I, Ricky Jones.
Do solemnly swear, Harper.
Do solemnly swear, or.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
Offered promise to pay me.
Offered, promised, paid.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Anybody or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public officer appointment.
Or promised any public officer appointment.
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
At the election at which I was elected.
At the election in which I was elected.
Or as a board to secure my appointment or confirmation.
Or as a board to secure my appointment or elections.
Confirmation.
Confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be.
So that we know it.
So that we know.
You can go to the meeting, we can go before. Thank you. Uh, I think I have some information back over here. I haven't activated it. Okay, we'll get to the.
This.
He get all your heat.
I don't have a computer, I'm sorry.
He does, but I'm just.
Was it?
There's no.
The resolution. Twenty twenty five eleven dash four five dash one seven nine. Or fifty five, five, uh, previous judge of public, the line of where three hundred feet. For a total of twenty nine and thirty four thousand. Five hundred seventy five hundred sixty cents. Obviously, five hundred over. Fifty two, three, five, hundred twenty five thousand.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, the part turn over to our engineer, uh, Wesley. Just wanted to remind you also, do a key comment, but uh, okay, this is a project that's been in progress since twenty eighteen. Uh, in fact, on December third, twenty eighteen, the council passed a development agreement, uh, with Latin, compared to LLC. So you can develop, prepare new metal development right there on the side of the road. Uh, it's a five-phase development, and in fact, they currently are already building the uh, infrastructure. Work for phase five, there's little ones to phase four that are more than halfway done. Uh, total is six hundred and thirty four acres, five hundred and fifty homes for that development as part of that agreement. However, they agreed that they would pay for the paving of Pioneer Road along the eastern boundary of their development. Uh, and to the city's collectives through the standard. In late twenty nineteen, the council asked to check with Coke, which was the first assessment. Westwood, uh, through the assessment of Pioneer Road. And in twenty, December twenty twenty, the city entered to pre-move the check with Coke, go ahead and do the whole survey, engineer, and design of Pioneer Road, method four seven, all the way down approximately ten thousand five hundred feet to the end, where it turns into uh, Pioneer Road again, ended up twenty seven. The city also executed an agreement with the developer, back in the hoes, to go ahead and treat versus city qualities that are approved for the design of Pioneer Road, Riley actually was the engineer and did that design, uh, of Pioneer Road. And it's been sitting there on one of our wood shelves, waiting for it to proceed to get funded. In February twenty twenty nine, Coke submitted plans, uh, for method four seven to Tex Dock in order to be able to do at least the driveway access uh, in port of twenty seven, uh, and ask for that permit. And it wasn't until uh, May of twenty twenty four, that Tex Dock finally approved that permit, just three years later. Tex Dock approved the permit for us to go ahead and do the work on the apron, and so in July of fifteen twenty twenty four, the city council awarded a reconstruction project contract for that Tex Dock driveway, uh, apron along three hundred feet into Pioneer Road to underage concrete for a total of one hundred thirty thousand five hundred twenty six dollars and seventy cents. Uh, that project was subsequently completed and the permit closed out with Tex Dock's approval of the work that we started. That been in discussion with the developer of fair metal, as the may be able to move forward to improve this of Pioneer Road. Uh, as I mentioned in the original agreement, they agreed to pay for portions of that cost, however, the developer also agreed to put it to escrow. The equivalent of fifty percent of the jurisdiction impact means that would be located in the city. The equivalent of fifty percent of the transportation impact fees that would be located in the city as part of the Fairmont Meadows north development was the council approved. The city will be able to use these funds to cover up portion of the cost. For the project, it includes drainage and asphalt paving approximately ten thousand three hundred feet of Pioneer Road. The city posted notice on October sixteen, twenty-third, in the White Messenger when the Pioneer Road pays. The city received four payment for both on October thirty-first for the bid opening. Unfortunately, one of the bidders, like, that Kadia was disqualified from not acknowledging the attenders. The qualifying bids are listed in the financial consideration section of your backup. Uh, three H concrete, even the loading, and GRW, and then J R I construction. Also, council, uh, status recommending an establishment of not exceed project intensity of three point five to five hundred dollars. Keep in mind that we currently will have approximately seven hundred thousand in escrow that the developer will be putting up for us to use towards this project. Uh, as part of that fifty percent of transportation impact fees, everything below. The remaining fifty percent will be paid to the city as usual, and that is when a builder comes to pull the building house permit, is when they pay the impact at that time. Pioneer Road is also the city's capital improvement plan for thorough, but it's some of the other And therefore, we are able to use the transportation impact fee money that we have for this project. We currently have three hundred and twenty-eight thousand in transportation impact fee fund. There are also funds located in our C I P fund, uh, that can be used for this project. So we have a big deposit money that should be able to use. Now, keep in mind that basically, what did we say, was it sixty, forty, or seventy, thirty split?
Yeah, sixty-six, thirty-three, two guys split.
So, uh, second, we're, we're on hold for whatever is about two thirds of the cost of this three, if he gives us the contingency, we put five hundred dollars, so we're gonna have to come up with the, you know, one point two million, which is per, and we have the ability to cover up our portion of the project. What I could not mention here is this is only gonna get us to the first two inch layer of asphalt, it's two, right, two inches. It's only gonna get us to the first two inch layer of asphalt. We really need four inches, because it's a level street. However, to recall, we have an interlodge agreement with Wise County that they come in and open the city roads for us. All we have to do is buy the material, and then they pay for the equipment and personnel costs. We've had conversations with our county commissioner, who debates. And he's agreed to go ahead and do the remaining two inches at the end of next summer, uh, when they finish with their county progress and they become available for us, and we couldn't look at, what do you say, the last time, October?
That's what he was mentioning, he wanted to go after October.
So, possibly October, maybe November, hopefully getting it done in October. When they're committed for the final two inches. So there's still gonna be that cost, and we're gonna have to split the development. This is just for the bid package, or brothers about explaining that we got for Pioneer Road. So, I told you, where the money's at, he's with this project as well as he's about to move into the bids that we got, and The good is, again, it's been designed. He can understand, he did it, he knows more about this project than anybody else. So, luckily, still, he was able to put out the B documents. And, um, now he'll be the one who will see the project, the mud party, to be the one to do it. But we couldn't, because he paid, uh, potentially using transportation impact fee funds. Then we need to be the ones that manages the project. Plus, the county did not walk through it, highlighted the mud, the what the city, the owner, they already have. So a lot of them are bringing it forward to you as part of another item of the county. We're looking at three quarters of this, whatever we project cost materials. But when the county's gonna do this, as I mentioned, October next year. Unless you got questions from me about what I just said, or if you're going to buy it. It's one of the questions, I, um, I know that I'm worried for the county's Is that something that I was remembering? So, so, what we were trying to do, to cross down was we're gonna have a job, and the county's saying they're gonna bring it up in two years. They will be able to include the first two inches of the asphalt in October next year. And then the next year, which is October twenty seven. The problem is, we think this project is gonna be done and ready for maybe around July time. There's a big gap through July and October where vehicles are gonna be driving the road, and it could be damaging the base, and it's gonna turn out more costly, because they're gonna have to come back and redo the road. And this is why we decided, we're gonna do it in the end, and we can see where the cost of the commission to, to all the work, including a two inch layer of asphalt. And then, we're done with them, and then we just go with the county. It doesn't matter, let's relate that with two inches of asphalt, you you're not gonna break the base, and like that, right? And most of our roads, like, we did, are about two inches, so it'll leave out the holes that we have there. But because this is a collector's street, and we normally continue to have a little more traffic on Pioneer Road compared to, say, other residential streets. That's why we can have four inches of asphalt. And the same one are working the highway of the county.
We anticipated that they're gonna be done, but I hadn't remembered two inches of
But two inches of, right. And then, you know, October of twenty-six, we're gonna get the two inches. And so, we'll be completely done with that project now, October of twenty twenty-six, remember? Say, okay, right? Yes, very good, Dan.
No, that's what we mentioned, was also residential streets, again, all Fairmont Meadows is on two inches of asphalt. Um, it's for the duration of at least three months, potentially four, five months, but there's not gonna be anything less. Um, it's just the life of this road, which may be thirteen to twenty years. Will last a lot longer, and be able to service the high volume of traffic a lot better than those four inches. Yeah, and that's what, moving forward, we've had multiple meetings of people inside of Pioneer Road as well, too. So, there's gonna be more coming this road, it's very much needed. But now, but a couple lots. But just
Damn it, Dave, I'm gonna pay more.
I'll hear it, it's a war of why we need more of the first two inches to the contractor, but this is going to be a much better option to put them for tracks. We're trying to dump through too many moves to save, like, just a little bit of the dollar base.
I know, Dave.
So
My, 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 my marketplace, we just want two inches for the county, and we have seventy-seven feet of interior. Is that also, uh, two thirds of our base split, and we don't have to cover any And also, there's a bit of a, there's one better split between them, because, again, they're covering the cost of doing extreme, doing our collector's street standard, that's what it is for. Do you have, just an idea of how much the cost of that
I believe, the materials that we might have, uh, our county commissioner he mentioned as well, something like dollars per ton, and the amount of tons we had, amounts like two hundred and fifteen thousand. Uh, so, we're looking at additional two hundred and fifteen thousand-ish or so.
The
Or, which is like thirty thousand, that's
Yeah. Yeah, it's terrible, Dave.
No, we
Actually, no, it's what he's talking about. I'm just curbing, Davey, but
So, the long description, like John set this up, whereas this has been going on for a while. Um, it's, one of the very first tasks I did was all with the development agreement here, when we did an analysis of this road. Um, you know, in the initial development agreement of the first five phases of Fairmont Meadows they were supposed to pay their portion of Pioneer Road, which they started on fix five. However, they came in discussing, we're gonna do the Fairmont Meadows north, we're gonna have these charcoals. We'll give more money, except if there's due to the market portion, that's just adjacent, you know? Give us a little bit more time, and we're moving forward with Fairmont Meadows north, and we'll get all the amount of that at once. So, that's kind of, keep, keep, keep out of the road. Um, with Fairmont Meadows north getting ready, they've made so many plans, you know, for doing them. Um, they're gonna get ready to move forward with construction soon. And they don't wanna have to get into Fairmont Meadows north without having a, 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 a road there. Um, it's not fair, because in third, in phase five, uh, they have some lots that are facing Pioneer Road, and it's very tough to see, but, and Yeah, right here, with announcing that, there's like five or six lots on fix Pioneer from fix three. And then, over here, there's another, like, eight lots or so that are facing, so, um they haven't said that they know this is a good thing, and they could work to lift the city got a yard back and forth, so I'll back up, just my actual slides, but, um So what we did is, we finally reached an agreement with the developers that, of Fairmont Meadows, that they were ready to move forward with this, and they've been working with John to, um to keep their escrow agreements and stuff in place, and trying to get them ready to have funds transferred over. Um, so they told me, me and John, the Lachlan, um developers had a meeting, and then in such a different timeframe, and they're like, I'll quickly give you the sped out, I outlined the timeframe that we could hit to. And the point that we hit was the ten thirty money, um bid early. And so, we, we did our advertising, we did that, and we came up with four contractors, as John mentioned, the Kadia did it in dollars, and they did that. Thankfully, they went to lowest bid, they didn't concede worth about even a thousand higher dollars to lowest. So, thankfully, that didn't come to be a detriment. But what we were left with is, we have two bidders that are practically, I mean, that's a pretty narrow margin between two contractors, and three H concrete and J R W, that both work inside the city for Um, but, today, we're moving forward a little bit in those thirty-nine hundred bucks apart, and we're moving forward with the three H concrete. Uh, that has done work, they, they did the first three hundred foot of Pioneer Road, um that John was mentioning, we did to connect the floor, so. So, with that, as I mentioned, uh, agreement, the original developers agreement states, never heard that their property touched Pioneer Road. They were in charge of all the structure in those boundaries. Because Pioneer Road, right now, all of the property owners, even the mayor, and you loan to the center of the roadway. So they had to dedicate right away for these improvements to be done. So anywhere that they've dedicated right away to the city, they're in charge of improvements. Those drainage base work and Um, with that, we got about ten thousand three hundred foot improvements. Lachlan has about six thousand, so that's where we're doing this, like, two thirds split between, um two thirds on Lachlan, one third on the city, this broken out of this. Um, something else that John mentioned was, now that they've moved into Fairmont Meadows north that is in our city limits, and they put in their developer, the admitting agreement to their original developer agreement that their owners provide the first fifty percent of the impact fees. They have three hundred and forty-five homes planted in Fairmont Meadows north, and our new, in, in, in fact, fee is three thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. So, with fifty percent of that being fronted, it's just shy of six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Which that is, that dollar now is significant, because that kind of helped get us to the target range where the city has enough money in the C I P fund and, um, in impact fees. So that we're not having to go out, try to find a way to borrow more money. It's kind of been the way this delays, we're gonna go on that and forth, we push it, and we front it out, and we push it again. Um, but now, all the money seems to make sense, and, uh we're ready to go. So, with that being said, um, it's this is what's being improved. So the green on the very far right of the street, and north is facing to the right of the street. Um, south would be over to the left, and, um the very first part, as I can't even do it, like, we've done this league, the rest of it is what we're gonna improve. About just shy of two miles, um, two thousand three hundred foot. All that's gonna get replaced, um, there are three drainage holters that we are going to have in part of this project. With one of them being a, we're doing six boxes of eight foot, like, four foot, um reinforced concrete, and and, uh, that's the one that's, right, see for the contact, that's right, but it's right north of that. It basically, we're the leader, it just happened, we were the leader of the ten thousand three hundred, um, it's pointing to. It's right there, there's a big creek that you can see running through this at all of the stream, um And that's where water gets over the road right now, and that's the worst part of the road, where you can drop it on Google Maps, and you can see that there's just a few, there's craters in it, because every single planet rains, and right about the water drains it overtops it. So, with that being said, besides the boxes properly, uh, but big peckles in, and there are guardrails in front of it and whatnot, and um, I was able to raise the road some, and even there, it's still showing that there's still a very small percent chance that water could potentially flow over the road, so for that portion of Pioneer Road, about two hundred fifty feet, I believe um, we are going with reinforced concrete, just so that if water is rushing over it, the concrete can asphalt. So if we know that we're potentially falling into this, uh, instance, that it could be a little water crossing um, we, I, I went ahead, we're make sure that we're, we're putting better products in there. Um, but with that being said, you know, it was a really tight roadway, um we have hard dishes that are gonna be improved everywhere, where here, all existing driveway, and even holsters and headwinds, so that the drainage is falling properly. Um, and that's where we came to with this agreement that originally, um, we were gonna give the county both layers of asphalt, and that's where we got into this, trying to jump the roots, just to save the, 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 uh Um, in order to, as John was mentioning, we wanted to just have the base work be repaired, we're gonna bring the B inches of flex space and have that lay our base, and you know, two inches of type B, which is a harder surface that has more strength, and two inches of type D, which gives you that nice smooth usually when you're on, like, a Tech Stock highway, and you're humming all the time. Get on more, a smaller Tech Stock roadway, or residential asphalt, where it's just a soft, smooth. So that's what most of you do, put the B down, that gives you the structural strength, and D add strength as well, but it's a more smoother, comfortable ride, um And so that, me and John looked at the estimates of what we could have saved, once the county commissioner told us how much they paid for the ton for asphalt. And what I was gonna do is put on top of the flex space to preserve it, because you gotta meet with the commissioner. We had this understanding that I thought the county wanted to pay from April one to September thirty. And that was our timeframe, so that's what we're like, let's speed this up, let's get this going, go finish in July. And then we'll have that August, September, we can get it the, uh, the county to come out here and do the first layer of asphalt. We had a meeting with them, right, before we started, um the awarding of this product, or the advertising of this project. And he told us that he wouldn't want to come out here until after October. Well, we've already sold the developer on a timeframe of going at, and they want this to be done by a specific time to help us sell their homes and their additional pieces of building. Um, so that just wasn't gonna work for anyone, so they decided to stay on the timeframe we had. And the, the dollar savings that I was looking at, you know it was coming down to, it was like a hundred thousand. And by, by letting the county do the very first layer of asphalt and waiting those three months, we were running a risk that we were gonna change the flex space. And over those months of having traffic, we could have put their bids up and tried to close for that timeframe, but people were, they were gonna drive around, and they were gonna keep using it, and how to go, and that duration, we didn't have flex space. Even the elements, they're So, we made the decision, let's let the contractors go ahead, first layer thing. We still get cost savings with the second layer. And that way, we haven't ever risked really the large investment that the city and developers are about to put into this road. Um, so with that
I think we can leave this slide.
Yes.
Let's turn over the very
Yes, I think this slide will feel a little bit better. So, with that being said, I took, looked in red, green, gray, and green. Um, the green sections are the portions in which they are under the city's control of overfunding, and the red sections are the portions that find the life of the Fairmont Meadows properties. So you can see that they have a lot of development on the west side of the road that is gonna be funding that they're in charge of paying for, which is why they have two thirds versus the city's one. And they have another twelve But, yeah, yeah, to take that away from the city, so uh, what John was gonna get me to bring up is, in order to make these work and, um fit within the city's budget, we did the very first, uh, sixteen hundred and forty feet, city portion one. Um, we are not going to pay that of asphalt, because we have some drainage improvements that still needs to be done there. The cost of those drainage improvements were somewhere in four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. And then you still had to tip pay for the asphalt that had to go on top of that sixteen hundred feet. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna put the flex space down, and put a chip seal on top of it. This is not a long-term solution, color. This could, with the limited amount of traffic that is in this smaller portion, it's mostly Fairmont Meadows north. It's gonna come out, even on the very far south side, it's gonna come out and take to the north, or turn back in. So we should have very, very much that closed with this area. Um, and we'll know that in the future, that that's still something that we have to be put this for. Hopefully, we'll have funding that we can do this in the near future, to where the base is still in very good condition, and that still hood is still intact, and we can put asphalt And we can put asphalt right at that bottom. So hopefully, with uh the way the county's gonna come out and help, you know, forecast something, but county will come out and do that second layer of asphalt of Pioneer Road. From the bottom, they're gonna follow it to Pioneer Cubs at four oh seven. Hopefully, in the following year, we can look into doing the drainage improvements that are required um and get that funded. And then we can have the county connect and help keep adding asphalt on top of this chip seal.
Did you hear already this was my right, this was in that section?
So this section though, what that section was is where this property, right about right here. That's the home. It's very hard to see, but this right here, across the street from that is um one of the roads from Ferbene Meadows space five. It's gonna hit basically where that tree line is extending to the bottom of the stream. That tree line is the very south side of Pioneer Estates, which is a development that's been talking to the city, um which I think they're gonna, I think, council pretty soon to talk about their development further. Uh but there is a drainage pipe that needs to go from Ferbene Meadows on the west side to the east side. And there's a drainage path that flows along that fence line. And so with Ferbene Meadows already so far ahead and they're getting ready to start paving in the next couple weeks, if not, in the next month, they just saw a box hole there. And so I've been working with them and with the property owners since he's getting ready to sell and he's got this investor ready to buy. It's kind of a big tricky game of me and my pay. Will you give approval to let us put this box and drain on your property the way it needs to? He's like, well, I don't care too much, I'm willing to sell this property in a few months. And then the developer was like, yeah, I understand, it's gonna help us with our drainage if we ever pick it up and fill it all up where it used to, but we don't own the property. So I kind of had to juggle it back and forth and begin to say, please, like this is gonna help us move forward with the paving of Pioneer Road. But that's, that's where that box will have to go.
On the far, and as far south of the areas of the bridge there, there's some of the, that the county actually built. Like, like one of them, called it from south, it's there's no, there's no side, it's about two hundred meters, that's where they're building.
So as the mayor mentioned, there is that bridge that's down here. So you can see there's water that flows right through here and you can see there's about three culverts. Um I think there are about three thirty six inch um corded and metal culverts and it needs to be outsized like they're now. Um but with that being said, we don't, with the money that I've been working with John, looking at what's in the impact fee fund and what is in the C I P fund. It doesn't make sense for the city that we can do that at this time. So to keep this project moving forward, to do some improvements to this section, to improve it on what it is now. Um we're gonna go with the base repair with the flex space and we're gonna put a seal put on it. And I, I'm quite confident that with the little number of traffic that's gonna go through here, we can get revisited to get those culverts repaired and uh and set properly with that ball, burr road, all that. Um if we can do that in the next three years, then all, we can be ready to just put asphalt right up on this city road. Um but we'll have to stay cautious in the future to know that this is still something that worked hard for us for this portion. And so that's what um from about right here. For measure up to the first road of Ferbene Meadows, that's where I get about that sixteen hundred forty, I think I'm going a little bit past the ground fell right here. So that's why we're getting about sixteen hundred and forty foot through here that is going to be um the sealed door portion.
And there's burr roads that, it starts looking like a
Yeah. As the mayor mentions, you know, these roads that are running east and west, they're coming this way so that they can go north to get east. If they wanna go north on two eighty seven, they're coming back here and getting all this access where they're going here. And then anything else to go south is all coming this way and probably using the internals of the neighborhood to keep moving this way to go south. Um so we, with the developer, we were pretty much with, I don't have to use the number top of my head, but they put a traffic impact analysis together of how the neighborhood flows. And we had to review it because they had to, they had to add that with their Ferbene Meadows north, um bases that they had recovered the last year. Um and with that, this traffic, they need numbers of all their entrances and exits in their neighborhoods and showing from their traffic volumes, it's, it's really very normal. That's gonna make it around that floor right there. So the only thing you have to report about is, we're getting to is the residents that kind of live down in this area that they're, those traffic lines are similar.
Or else obviously.
Obviously. They will be, they will be such a city roadbed, so that's the more important, but um.
If I have to say, Sunday afternoon, uh four o'clock, I was doing a score of my game, my mom would have a game with me. She said that I had a camp card, I said, I remember you, five minutes, sixty two hours. So I mean, it's no traffic this time.
So this is the location that I mentioned, we're having the big, the larger box culverts come through here. Um I mean, it's tough to tell, but you can just see, if you were going up and down the rest of this roadway, you can see how it just gets so much more deteriorated right here. Um I mean, Josh can attest to this, almost every single time it rains, all the gravel ends up on the downstream side of this area right here. Because you can see it, you can see it building up on this side over here. All there is right now is just one seater, like forty eight inch culvert. We need like eighty foot wide of box culverts right here. This is a very large, it's a named creek, it's the northern part of Elizabeth Creek that flows through here. Um so basically, all this Dollar General and Grand Road flows under four oh seven. And this entire pasture over here keeps falling until it gets down to right here. So that's part of the reason that we're doing a lot of improvements. You can see right here, just upstream, they have some pretty large culverts around there, um or headwalls around there, culverts that they have placed right here. So there's no culverts and culvert.
Like, like, I said, still a little more.
Okay, so anyways, um a good point to bring up is that this is within the Blackland portion of this road that is being improved. So that, that is a big benefit to uh to this road. So uh with that being said, that's a lot of background, that's a lot of history with it, um yeah, I mean more, uh I'm open to answer any questions. Um with that, what we need to do is we have um the contractors up at the road end, um the low bid was three H concrete. So with that, if there's no more questions, um.
We're just, we're gonna have to move every tree next to the road, so.
Wasn't the bid at the place any, the, so we're, a lot of this road doesn't have a right way, it's a property owner's field on which is the center of the roadway. We are using the fence line as a strip with red light, which is a little too, you know, optimum. So if there are any trees that are within the edge of the pavement and the fence line, they are all allowed to be removed. Because we need to put, we need to put um ditches alongside the road whereas right now, there's some ditches on this road there, so. I would say from my experience driving up and down the road, anything that's a problem with a fence line, there are Yes. There, there are bad areas and little, I think, you know, long-term. There are any other questions?
So with all this, the only section that's been browned is the whole section.
So it's not gonna be browned, we're gonna put a seal put on it.
I mean, past, like, before the curve, but it, or it's all at these, we're in the west corner. Yeah, all the way, if you break through each of the curve.
No, this is all, this should all be
It's been, it's been a minute since I've been there.
Yeah, it's got some asphalt that's already paved and it's paved up to the bridge. And then once you get on the north side of this bridge, it's back to asphalt. So yeah, honestly, the, the south side, I mean, this is from March of twenty twenty one, so I can only imagine how much work this looks, um.
I'm sure there's a running goal on that road, it's only a tiny, it's not.
Yeah, no, once you get to the, once you get to the bridge right here, um everything north of the bridge. So we'll come back and we'll do some repairs a little bit past it, but everything to the north is uh is browned. So no, we, we will not be leaving any gravel on this section.
The mixed doors up there. So all that's why it's in the city, so eventually, uh so like uh all the Yeah, so the county, that's always Yeah, so anywhere that our state limits, that's usually a county road, that's what we're saying, that's what we're saying, that's it. We're not responsible for the city maintenance. All the support is and the county, like, we're making improvements. I think my most uh
Well, they're, they love for those segments, so they know their customers call them.
I would call the county if you're gonna ask.
Yes. So thankfully, with the way that Pioneer Road is played out, there's a lot of long stretches of roadway that we're gonna shut down, work on, where we get between residents' areas. Mayor's office in the south without impacts and what it goes. Um we're looking to have this contractor go the wise, you know, January first, and they're telling us they'll be done by July. So um you know, those sections are really done at periods of time, but I do not think that there's, there's gonna be many, many impacts. You know, there may, there may be a part where people that live on the south side of the road will no longer go north to get east on four oh seven. But they will just loop around these access roads, I don't, it's gonna be too many large, of course. So thankfully, again, the, the one location that's gonna have all the drainage right here, these homes, they either go around Misty Mountain and come back down to get to Pioneer Road. Or these homes just keep going towards the north. Um and any of the homes that are on the south side, they just gotta circle down the access roads to come up through the south to get to their homes, but this It's gonna, I would say it's gonna be quite minor in terms of why they, where they're probably, it's not serious. Thankfully, there's not so much traffic that goes from Pioneer Road.
There's only count, count the six hundred, that was pretty good there before they started on Prince Park. There's only sixteen houses total.
But that's
This is true, I mean, they'll, they'll get over it, it'll be a long way, if it means in the long run.
Right, no, I think for a product of this size, um it should be done twice. I won't necessarily teach anything, but this is from a traffic standpoint, um it should be quite straightforward.
So anybody under nine, you're just, anybody under thirty, ones about fifty down the road. He may have a little thirty, ones about fifty, but four. Anybody at a crossover, it should be ones about sixty.
I've been on this road before and I have seen those people going sixty and I don't know how they
My, my kids in the bag.
It will also surprise the facts that it will improve safety as well. We're not sure if there's too many accidents that happen on it, but it will be a lot safer to drive on the road and so have more pop ups and gravel. So Yeah, unfortunately, I've talked my goals to a couple of the city, that will probably make the city worse for us. Uh they say they're only a good, they're surface and not gravel, that means that, uh No, it stops at the three hundred foot portion. So we should already have that asphalt that's paved and um it, it'll connect and apply right up to it, so.
Is the little pass set up in the year?
See if I can get the picture, we're not gonna be able to get a picture that's um new enough. So it's been, yeah, this is just
Think of the little pass that's true. It's already there.
Yeah. Everything will be paid.
And uh so these two companies coming very close, three H concrete, they, they need work, they need to work out three hundred feet.
I believe the three hundred feet are a little tougher, well, they've done the phase two of Chisen Hills, which we will discuss there are some big issues that we're having. I would say we had our city inspector that he works for the West one with me, Clark Wilson, um he was out there. We have test reports of all of their labs and stuff, um it's my knowledge, their paving and drainage work is quite, quite good, you know, above par. Um I fully believe they are capable of being able to do what's required. They're also the contractor that did, I know this isn't really a property sheet, but they are the contractor that did the railroad, which we'll discuss this as well. Uh but they did about the first thing, we could do the railroad, um
I think that road is
Yeah, yeah, and that's what we'll we'll have another discussion in the
Again, the first of Chisen Hills, but we are having
It was three H concrete, um I will discuss this further, I would like to request some geotech tours from them because they are failing at a warbling quick rate and they are very bad looking for being two months old, if not even that. And so I don't think that's a warranty issue, but we have there is something that
The contract is only a three.
Part correct, so that's what, you know, you can go and look at some of the streets and all pointing to the ones that they did. Because Chisen Hills, I've done this two phases, we did the first phase, was JR West helping with the first phase, they only did the drainage. So that's why with JR West, they did, um you'll recall back in twenty one, twenty two. Um we had a very large box culvert, we had to be there and we actually had to fire right away to do an detour to work through there. So JR West helped with that and I was very pleased with their work, I have a good relationship with their budget manager that they work with. Um they don't necessarily do roads, but the road contractor that the team up with, that's on this project, is Pete Street. And they do phenomenal work. And Pete Street did Ferbene Meadows, they did the first two days together. So Pete Street did Ferbene Meadows, Pete Street also helped out with the Skybeam, Skyway, and we did some chip sealing, zip fill stuff. Um they helped out with doing that, I think, last spring. Um so then together with the other team, and then the three H concrete, they've done drainage road, they've done some breaking up of the sewer, um sewer street part, which is Chukum Park now. Yeah, Chukum Park, um and then they have done, they did the phase two, both the drainage and the asphalt, but phase two of Chisen Hills. Um and then they did like the, well, which was a uh C D V G project, um technically not part of like the Chisen Hills packages. So um we've had experience with both of them and I, I have a rare involvement with it. Um and what, something we have guidance is that I've given an estimate to John as well of what the inspection services will be to make sure we have a city inspector on site. Um while we're doing majority of the work on Pioneer Road and that as well as what we're reporting on the developers, which I'm sure will. That's part of the entire cost of the paving improvements for them. So it'll be shared, split, unless it's a development issue.
And so uh obviously, as I said, it's closed, but part of the past, we have local contingency, does your company get them to their, like, come back asking for more?
So the only, because the only reason we would be allowed to overrun any of those additional quantities would be if there's an onsite problem. That has to be approved by us three here, but you know, the city inspector, the contractor comes to me, Josh, you're jarring with a problem and he's like, hey, you actually need to do things this way, yada, yada. We'll be able to come together if you're, is it something the city needs to do? And get them, have them give us an estimate for what that is. If it's reasonable and you feel it's fair, we'll move forward with it. Um part of the reason why I would add contingency on top of these projects is to keep them moving because it could be on a much busier road and it could be something the contractor can fix quickly in two or three days. But if we miss that council factor, we have to come and discuss with the council and such and be like, hey, we need this extra twenty five thousand dollars to do whatever, you know, whatnot. Um it's just part of good practice to establish a contingency of not exceed. Because if there's anything that's larger than that, that gets outside of that, that absolutely needs a council decision to make. But that's why we try to keep, you know, about um I think we put twenty percent on this project, um so that if there's anything that's any steeper than that, that needs council consideration. But that contingency usually is put in place to help your city staff keep things moving and it's time to make.
Right, right, uh phase two can be referred.
They did.
That's why we have the fun. Right now that we have, we got team fun. We've got a team man under brother twice there, so we're making off of this one for future road projects. To that, we'll be talking about the, the work session. So to answer your question, uh, it, it is a common practice for cities to have a contingency from now, just in case something comes up, so we won't delay the project. And then of course, we just keep the council informed that, uh, what's going on, who does the project, who does the. We just don't know what we're gonna need. And I'm comfortable with that as long as it's a, a problem that any company would have, not just because they. Developers, so this. Yeah, trust me, they cannot just say, oh, we need to manage it, no, they have to convince. Us that if you do a fairly more base, we need a star, whatever the case might be, that we love to find the doctor. Um, we don't just say, oh, yeah, okay, but.
Three H concrete is support ninety six and JR West is support.
Uh, they didn't lie on nothing. I think they're both there, uh, and they both.
And I would say this is kind of a small project compared to a lot of other big road projects. I was actually the man that we had for different. Submit a bid if we're talking about. I think it also speaks to the fact that we're starting to build that relationship with that history of these different. Fact, they know us. These folks with us, we keep having companies that have inspections and both of ours, they can help to get water, whatever the case might be, so. I think it speaks volumes to the fact that we had four. Good companies all they kind of gave them this small product for them, uh, but. Because of the fact that a lot of the work in our city. Taking that they are a utility, they were starting their. So a side of the business this year, so they're good. Just driving it's sorry. They are. They're often running for taking it wrong, and full disclosure, we've been meeting with a KDA executives because they wanna purchase the, uh, old Oppen Artery building in Austin. And convert that into their new headquarters and lay it on their, uh, and so they've already submitted some questions for us to reply back to them. Everything that they're proposing, most everything's gonna be doable for us, so there could be a chance that they're going to be leaving our location in wrong. Be fair, regardless of what happens with this.
Yeah, and to be fair, you know, this followed by this, it has a harsh part of it to it, but we had a meeting with the county on the Monday before this production was, and so I released an agenda on Wednesday morning. Um, two days before this was, so this was a very quick, the advertisements that they opened was very quick, even to what John and the head over had requested of me. So to be fair, it moved very, very quickly, even to buy these, it's a, as they are having to call people to check on all their materials and all their stuff and checking what their schedules and so. The bidding process has stuff to do with the contractors as well, and so, you know.
So they aren't just.
Correct, they were responsible because I sent out an agenda, if they didn't, it always had a agenda, so whenever they throw their bid prices together, I adjust their feedbacks and they just was. A little bit screwed up because I didn't see my removal of the item, adding of certain items, changing the volume, some of that stuff I adjusted towards the last minute. Due to some of the things that we discussed, right? I just wanna get that out of there. No negative connotations, so, um, it just, it happens sometimes, sometimes.
Probably do it side by side. They're doing that massive project is here, but they.
There's all, all these.
So you have very goals, you can't take action at this time, or you can't. But rest, uh, definitely do research, get some more information, or, uh, breakfast to. Not a lot of data, even a lot.
Now you have. There's a couple two that. You know, you mentioned your friend who said, uh, the data, especially. You gotta pick one of two, do you choose one of the other?
Yeah, I, I would not ask that. I think they're all very qualified. I haven't been able to choose. I will say, three H concrete is more of a grading and paving company, and JR West is more of a drainage company. This project is pretty much split when you look at the funding, it's pretty much fifty fifth in the twenty two. That large box over that it's, so is, it's gonna be quite, it's almost gonna be rich. We have ninety foot span of covers over here, however, that's about two miles worth of roadway and regrading and ditching that need to cut, so. You have one that's more specific in one area and one that's more specific in the other, but I don't think, I think choosing either means the, the, what's necessary is probably.
I say that they're both equally. Good, as you said. And I want to. Actually, we had a discussion with the council spring of twenty twenty three, when we were looking at local renovation debt, or a lot of different options for council. Part of the. Where it's all the ones, Chisenilles and Ramro did, he has. Take a lot of attention to the tax rate, and then I saw the tax rate, and so the council decided, oh. We're not bringing the fund under the, through the debt, so, but again, fortunately, because of the wealth or experience, the amount of impact these were collecting. The fact that the word negotiation steel, with the developer in front of us, basically fifty percent of the impact that are all over. And in fact, we did so well in that free law package and saved some money and got it in, uh, interest earning very, uh, we. That money still at our disposal, you know, certainly large in our transportation effect, and one of the, and we, one of the that are front of us, the boundaries, we have enough. Fortunately, the difference between the three H and the JR West, the great difference is mobilization, the JR West is wide, is it. Processes, doesn't look at us, so their published is high and high. JR West's real world, scheming and spiritually. I was talking about this.
How long is the schedule? Do you have how much you can play the argument there?
Who, how much JR West is, it won't scale to be that.
Hundred thousand dollars if they're scheming that.
Yeah, that's fair, so that, um. Can be seen in different ways, is they see that as they feel that the volumes in the project are reasonable. And that there won't be major overruns, because if they thought there was gonna be a major overrun of something. They shift the way that they did on, if it's on mic fines or this, well, this is gonna be way much more, we're gonna have to add this on if they're can't, if they just don't have it taken care of, or they feel there's items missing, um. The mobilization thing is kind of a way to give the contractor a little bit like, hey, thanks for coming out and showing up, here's some, here's some, because they can, they can request fifty percent of the mobilization, you know, within the first month. So they can get more money out of the product, so it's just a, it's a. What do you call it? It's kind of a game of what the contractors do, probably get around certain things, so, um, it's not a bad thing, or it's not necessarily a good thing, it's just the way that some people. Put their money into things, rather than their money out of mobilization. Right, probably, so.
This will approve a resolution two zero two five, which more than that, zero five dash seven nine, for the roadway construction project of Pioneer Road with three H concrete, a total of two million nine hundred thirty four thousand. Five hundred seventy five thousand sixty seven, an established amount to exceed project total contingency of three million, five hundred twenty five thousand minutes.
That's it. All right. The votes. I will keep the. So getting back to the position I'm. Keep in mind that part of that, members can be part of the park board, maybe you can also be part of some of that, but we do not have a council number of. Do us, um, to offer a PZ, which will now create that opening, so once we have that, we'll prepare or put out. Applications that we so desire, and then. For we've received the Senate Act, uh, on the end, can you quote the meeting members of two parks, the meritage board, and the G T's. Thank you, and I'll take this so quickly. If you recall back in twenty twenty three, the council did in fact have some orders creating. The Parks Recreation Board has also made services. Made up of five, uh, members. And also made up of an alternate position, um, at this stand right now, we have all five places filled, um, in fact, we have a chair, or a board of board right here. Jennifer Katsoski, but we have the vacant position that is open. Now, the vacant, we're all in that position, I should say. Is allowed to attend meetings and participate in discussions, but can only though if one or four of the assigned members are not present at the meeting. And will today, effects and challenges here, making form a few times with our parks board, um, so it'd be good to have that position filled as well. We did receive an application from Mr. Devin Zaker Rice, who's still here with us this evening, uh, to, uh, be considered for council, and, um, to this position as I make sure there is a resident. Of their standing registered over.
JR, you have that conversation, so if you're still interested, then I would approve the appointment of Peter Evans at the RIS and Parks and Recreation Board, prepare to be good for the meeting to the alternate position.
That's it. First, uh, hi, what's up? First, would I get my name? We received the Senate Act of the legislation twenty twenty five eleven dash oh six, that's one and four, we can be, city council, a treaty to the floor policy. To allow the mayor to cancel a city council meeting and to approve a prayer verification to the city council. Thank you, I'll take this one. So the mayor council, um. Have a policy and a forum, uh, procedures and formal policy, I should say, that was passed back in twenty twenty, it's been amended a few times. Uh, this, this current one that you're considering is allowing, uh, the mayor, uh, to be able to cancel a regular meeting in the city council. As to the reason why we have a cancellation, typically, if we go ahead and time, we're not gonna have a meeting because. Uh, whether the council is sitting tired, we need to work with someone who's not had that meeting, then we can bring a resolution that a, a, this council meeting draw employee approved, so if you cancel that. Sometimes, uh, we have agenda, a few agendas on the, on the council meeting, and for various reasons, it wasn't agenda, it was all by the wayside, and I'm not gonna be ready for that meeting. And that's a fact that was recently, um, where we had. All of a sudden, we have a big precedent, we. And we'll come in, and I think. Answer to the items, just, just to be, so, um, we, I think whole council, which you guys will pay, and. So, well, in order to certify this going forward, I think we consider with this language, have a threat on, we should leave the back of the policy. That shows the language that. I mean, for, it's a mayor's authority, to go ahead and ask for a meeting that. Council. Far that cancellation would need. At the same time, just sort of making, uh, this, uh, policy, um, address, we can go ahead and put again, the, the, to add a prayer verification. That you, the city council meeting. There are, there are resources, uh, most cities in our area that have a verification. And that's my face, a different face to give prayer verification at the beginning. Also, thank you. This council, uh, we will say professionals come to you, prayer verification. This was discussed, this is a council meeting, uh, for the city. Free, but the reservation was denied at that time, because our First Amendment applications had a verification. And over meetings, um, they, uh, reached out to the city attorney, and she said it would be a best practice to go ahead and. Give the council, uh, the three, uh, that we amend our. She was a formal policy by adding a verification, such, one connection, there was a lot of, one business, which I mean, I have a verified portion of. We, she also sent email to me, um. Today, um, an email that I put in front of you. That's, that's confidential attorney by privilege medal that she sent, she's not disclosed that. But she's saying, well, she recommended. Prayer verification added to the house meeting. She's come to us, so. On that, I want also to have your address, and thanks for the question. So the council meets. You two, the, uh, for.
I imagine they're, they have something to make you this, about how to clear set up and have to.
First one. The tractor, uh, pronounced, but that, that's not dogs, in that, you have two things, groups.
Two. So.
I pretty well, so whatever, you'd like to. So just, they know.
I'm just ignorant and. State versus, like, you know, separation of state, um, and I have a lot, which is, um, we make sure that they did truly encompassing of every single. On saying just to. They're outside, or she thinks.
We have to, I remember that, they have to, you know, somewhere around some.
It's different, so. Yes. And I would take any suggestions that anybody has to reach out.
What would we do in the plan when you don't have someone coming in to do it for ourselves?
Like some.
Where you can post a agenda on Friday or Monday, not meeting. Uh, the legislature said you have to post it at least three business days. And oh, by the way, the day of the meeting does not count as a posting day. And I believe the day you posted it is because it doesn't count, or this is the council we got from T M L. That may not count either. So yeah, so now we're gonna be posting our agendas on Thursday, Friday and Wednesday. We now can do it on Tuesday.
Yeah, five, five, five.
So we've been posting the agenda, but we're still trying to work on getting the backup, like still getting the two guys. And so they said that in our agenda, the backup, it just said the agenda. So.
Am I just getting covered up with? We had a specific Monday. So hopefully you.
To promotion. I sent you. Door. Uh, I'm going to approve retribution. Two girls, five, one more, that should say especially. Uh, one second.
One second.
I'll try to say that.
All right.
Those votes. Here, this way, that's why this is. And now I just remember three.
Okay.
Yes. Analysis of special. On my right, I will have a mic. And then our three, six, seven, eight, level three, four, and straighter. And I want to speak to the. Analysis of special retribution to municipal courts law question. This is municipal court. He wrote that? Yes, this. That's on. Got my reader. Go ahead. Alright, go ahead. So we take a photo.
How much you got about as is what's.
No, we check the rest, make the photo off. Okay, proclamation by the mayor of the city of New Fairview, Texas, whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas. And whereas more people come into contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined. And public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal public. And whereas municipal judges and court commissioners have pledged to be never mindful of their neutrality and impartiality. Through the equal service of all and conform to the standards set by the candidates of judicial conduct. And whereas municipal court plays a significant role in preserving the quality of life in Texas communities. Through the adjudication of traffic offenses. Ensuring a high level of traffic safety for our citizens. And whereas municipal judges and clerks continually strive to improve the administration of justice. Through the participation in judicial education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state and local professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the knowledge of the Texas municipal courts. And salute their critical role in preserving the public safety, protecting the quality of life in Texas communities. And deter the future criminal behavior. Now therefore, we are told that the New Fairview City Council recognizes a week of November seventeenth through the twenty first, twenty twenty five. As municipal court week and extend our appreciation to the professional municipal commissioners. The men O'Gale and Susan Greenblum and deputy court clerk Emily Cheshire. For the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the citizens of New Fairview, Boy and Paradise. In witness where I am honored to set my hand and cause official seal of the city of Fairview, Texas. To be addressed the seventeenth day of November, twenty twenty five, John Taylor, man.
Well, it is very, very important that exceptional.
Well, I noticed the spoke on the department and judges. It's our first time for Zell.
We want to eat.
Sorry.
Oh, no. We can use our other. I think we're all. Is it over with your turn?
Baron Hassel.
Hassel, you ready to ask?
Uh, no, no, I just have both. I don't agree to discuss the question, but why did I just officially request that we put on the agenda to discuss the permanent business specifically for how buildings and shit.
Yes, and I think which in December, right?
Yes, I have that ready.
So we're doing research right now. Parents are meeting their parents, I think, the weekend after Thanksgiving. So yes, so we are working on getting information so we can come out of that session. Anybody can tell us what you want.
And I have a question. Maybe it's that.
Right, so.
I guess I made a. Went out and worked. Pretty proud of our. So, oh, but you got a marriage position last week. We can turn out, uh. The grass is fifty, fifty, eight, going. And I have important dates, I don't know until the last night, for the best. First of all, it was around about ten. We'll start with. December third. December third is the southern end of the house. At the bottom of. Of the. December third.
December. It's the third day.
It's the third day.
Yeah, it's the third day.
Do you have that?
What's that?
Oh, the house, yes. For some of them. Cause I was. Uh. Sam, my name is Sam. December sixth. At that, you know. Here. Uh. City, uh, council appreciation. It's January of that. Twenty twenty six. We'll put it out.
Yeah.
January of that. Say that, um, that's the council appreciation there and that is. That's not for them because they appreciate y'all. It's for y'all to appreciate staff and everyone who works with us, for us, board commissioner. Uh, contract commissioner, exploit, yeah, irony of this place, anybody that shows us.
For that?
Yes, ma'am.
Seventy, seventy nine.
Yeah. Where is our leader for that topic?
It's, it's.
Should we do that next year?
It's gonna be at the on release, uh, indoor racing. On thirty three. Yes.
Yes.
Laser tag, all of that.
Yes, so we're gonna get all three, we're gonna get the whole thing. Laser tag, simulated race car driving, plus actual race car.
Oh, yeah, we were.
We're. I know, I'm a man. I lost her. So. And then we get an hour of, uh, the video games.
And like. Yeah.
And then there's a three D experience.
Six to nine.
Six to nine.
What's that three D experience?
Uh, the like, the same.
Thank you.
Crowded machine. There's gonna be plenty of stuff to do, folks. And oh, by the way, it's also a dinner. Uh, unfortunately, we have gotten, uh, some sponsorships, Westwood being one of them. Big sponsorships can be able to cover the cost of the state. I'm gonna have to extra contribute for this, but again, it would be good if you had.
And it's plus one.
I'll be getting three plus one.
Um, I'm.
I'm.
It's.
That's.
She is.
She is. Uh, so it's a plus one, we'll be giving a, uh, saving the day that well, in my, uh, for the richest state about eighty people. And then we also have funds that we have, uh, gift cards, about two fifty five dollars. Because we don't have that.
Oh, there's five zeros.
You don't want to violate state law. But then our volunteers get a chance to go in and draw for that, that time. Soon as we created some sort of a digital.
Probably.
Fortune thing in particular, right? And when they popped up, we'd come in and I'd hold the bag up and stick it in their pillow out and see. If it was a twenty five dollar gift card, then a all sorts, or a thirty dollar gift card, then a all sorts.
That's an awful lot of money.
Yeah. So it, it, it's just a fun event.
Realize.
It would be good if we could have all the council there, put you over the year, the next, council members to show up with your plus one. To thank all the folks for what they did the year before and help, you know, get things done here. The services that provide the presence of New Fairview. Uh, and then Emily does a very good job of taking a lot of the photos that you've seen through the Friday memos, stuff of the year and others. And does a talk presentation, so you'll get to see a lot of the different things of the freshman year because. Yeah, sometimes all that we do. Yes. Not as much as we had to do the first year, because the first year, I'm still gonna have a year. And we ended up having catered them, but we had to set everything up. And then take everything back down. Next step, well, really? I mean, we appreciate ourselves? But that's okay. It's a well-oiled machine. You do those special events that everybody knows with, with, with their role. I have a person we got.
Last day. January twenty eighth, six P M. At the catered conference, the very first P U A meeting slash marriage collision. Will unveil our P U A board and. Yeah.
My husband, the ambassador, the treasurer, secretary.
And I can definitely just. Anybody that's either.
In the way, I will post possible forums.
What time is it? Six P M.
If they don't get six, then we'll start this early and we all can be done by eight.
I'm gonna bring some. That's all.
Sure.
Do you remember? I have different.
For Austin.
Great. What was the first app?
All right.
Those votes.
Look at that.
Oh. Eight twenty four. With that, we'll move on to, uh, work session. I have people.
Richard Jones. Peter Ross.
Oh, yeah.
Stephen.
I have at least a chat. So really, very important, I'll discuss about food, grand road and food.
Uh, back in there, you know, on call on, uh, platform engineer, Roger Willett from Westwood to come up and give the presentation on grand road. Uh, for a circle and just give you some background. At April of twenty one, the twenty one council approved the chapter to create the contract of all agreements with Sunrise LLC. They agreed to pay for the construction of the first three hundred and fifteen meter feet of grand road. And eight point five inch concrete pavement, including drainage fork. As part of the agreement, the city agreed to share sales tax revenue with Sunrise in a fifty fifty split for three years. To allow that to recoup the cost of the project. On February twenty third, twenty twenty three, the city ended up accepting grand road improvements. And the total cost for the public improvements submitted by Sunrise that were approved by the city totaled five hundred and seven nine thousand, seven hundred dollars and twenty eight cents. The agreement with Sunrise actually meant it issued in twenty twenty two. And among other things, it restarted the three year window for Sunrise, meaning to include their costs beginning June of twenty twenty two. Based on the substacks that reached to be got from the Texas Congress offers, uh, the total reimbursement amount. So then if Sunrise over that three year period was three hundred and fifty seven thousand, one hundred and twenty one dollar and sixty cents. As you can see, they didn't recoup all of their money back. We actually got the load and then a significant savings. Grand Road is a city street that's located on the eastern side of Los Angeles. Near the intersection of eleven four seven, two hundred and seven. The remaining one thousand six hundred feet of the roadway is still gravel to be stayed. Grand Road is listed as a collective street, just like Prime Hill and the Tom's Island earlier. And needs on the C C I P plan, curver plan. So that means you can also use transportation impact fees for costs involving this part. We're bringing aside a folder to discuss with city council, how we're looking for the baby, uh, one thousand six hundred of grand road. And putting, and the engineer put together screw cost estimates over three baby section. In which we, uh, leave the license direction for the council. There's also gonna be some engine implants that are still gonna need to be worked on. To fix the alignment of grand road on the left, probably talk more about that. Uh, as well as the setup for the bidding process. But with all that needs to be done, we feel confident we could be ready as early as fifty four in March of twenty twenty six. To go ahead and lead out, find your road to, uh, start working on. The council had a workshop discussion of staff acting and driving for the body of health. Act on May fifteenth, twenty twenty three, regarding various options for funding the needed construction and drainage improvements. Services. At that meeting, staff was directed to earmark seven hundred twenty nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Into CEOs that were issued, you remember we issued three point five million of CEOs in August, twenty twenty three. Well, of that three point five million, seven hundred twenty nine thousand, six hundred dollars of big earmark for grand road, uh, for needed approvals. These funds are currently located in our C I P fund, which has cash on hand. Grand Road, as I mentioned earlier, is on a curve plan, therefore we're also able to tap it to the currently three hundred and twenty eight thousand we have in terms of impact fees in that part. So with that, I'm returning over to, uh, rather talk about grand road that we've done over the middle of the project.
Isn't that the correct time to take? I think we already said, uh, because that's the same number that you're talking about for, from the back of the. Prime.
Right, so what I'm letting you know is, remember this picture of lots of money that you can go ahead and move off for the finding project. Or the grand road. Because we're gonna have almost seven hundred thousand that we're gonna get in this road of development. And because we've got, uh, money in our C I P fund and because we have three hundred and. Uh, I said, give you transportation. You don't have to wipe out any of those funds. You can take a little bit here, you can take a little bit there to go towards the finding road, and you still have enough for, for grand road. He didn't see.
I guess the problem is we know what, are we allowed to say what the balance of the C I P fund is? We have.
But.
Yes, I can find it, it was.
Right.
So from. It's. Yes. So we're trying to see some big money that's in the impact fee balance, even the C I P fund. It should be enough to cover what's needed to get finding road done. I'm not sure about all three grand road options, or should get the majority.
Is it grand road or a place?
And grand road has had monies that was part of the bond, the face.
Right, that's right. That's part of it.
You remember?
So if part of the D D I has directed us. You put seven hundred twenty nine thousand, six hundred dollars, who's that part? We had had money, it's in our C I P fund, I mean, our C I P fund right now, but I would give you a percent of around one point six.
And to be exact, we are. Oh, let me scroll in. Yeah, okay, yeah, we are one point six four one.
So one point six four one million dollars, we have our C I P fund up, which seven hundred and twenty nine thousand, six hundred is for grand road. That's.
That's. We, uh, what is? Part of the agreement of doing the base two debt was that we've been utilizing first, um, two. Paying us down that debt to come out of the way to practice this grand road as part of that.
Yes, you're correct. I, we were directed that seventy five thousand each year comes out of the transportation impact fund. And gets moved over to the I N S fund to pay down the debt that we have to pay each year for the twenty twenty three. Debt issue, long and short, right? And that's certainly ongoing for the life of that bond, uh, which I believe is a twenty year. But keep in mind, we're continuing to build homes in our city, which continue to have to pay that transportation impact fee. So we're still continuing to add to that, um, fund.
Sound good? Much for me? Yeah, no? Okay, so yes, with all that, um, when we look into. Back up here to see the first eight hundred selfie. Uh, when we did this back in twenty twenty two, it was something I very much that had the chapter community agreement. Uh, we went up the eight and a half inch concrete section, uh, mayor kind of spoke on it briefly earlier, but they have about thirty, forty fully loaded truckloads that go into a cement plant. Daily, um, so they figure reinforced concrete payment section is necessary for, for the amount of truckload that gets there. Uh, the remainder of the road, about sixteen hundred foot all the way up to the dead end area is currently gravel. And there's also not a, um, page for, you know, the actual radius for a turnaround for any emergency, emergency vehicle. So, um, should maybe emergency be a long pipe of grand road? You have to, uh, force them to, you know, get on people's private vehicles or let them have to turn around. There's not a safe and reasonable, uh, turnaround within public right of way. Um, so with that, uh, John asked me to come and speak more on this, um. It is on the city C I P plan, so as we mentioned, it's partly impact fees we can use for it. But that being said, I have three different payment sections, um, that we can move forward with. Um, with that, I have the three I would stream. The first option, um, I was looking at there's traffic loads and what could be on rest of grand road and, you know. Conflict of concrete is necessary. What would they need calls about and having people come to the city? And once you put on grand road, are these storage, very near, um, we've had a warehouse. I can't say exactly what it is that we're doing. It's more of a storage warehouse type thing, but what the type of truckloads they're doing aren't gonna be that heavy. Um, so I feel, I feel confident that if you, you know, move forward with option one, that's the city's, um, two lane collective road. And we could, uh, we could get that paid and that would be a very good section. You can see it comes in just over eighty two thousand. Um, option two, this is gonna be something quite similar to what we did with the residential roads and Chisholm Hills. This is going to be some type of base improvements and we're going only a two inch layer, um, you can see, um. Oh, I actually have this. Number, the, number two, let's just take the asphalt should of course go onto picture three. I, I wiped out the four inch of the type of any chat just because we're just going with, you know. Six inch of base with two inches of asphalt on top of it. Sorry for that mix up, but you can see that one, it's just a four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars and change estimate. And then option three, which is here with the diagram number two, um, will be a four inch type B with a two inch type B. This is what the city standard, uh, of a collective road would be, and we can group the base, um, as necessary. Can you see that estimate coming about six hundred thousand? What I wanted to give the options on here, but I'm sure the C I P map on there. The, the future growth of, is that on the C I P website, C I P map?
I think so, yeah.
I'm just seeing if I'm talking, you'll find it all here. So with the future growth of New Fairview, we put, when we had to do the impact fees, we put together a map for the future roads that we have. This is.
Yeah, so go to the maps. I think you, uh.
Just click. Just click New Fairview. There you go.
And then put down, now I can track that.
Awesome, look at that. I have to give credit to government. Yeah, so go ahead. Okay, so to give a little background, these roads that are in blue and in yellow are on the C I P plan. That's why this yellow road right here, these are all called to be two lane roadways. These, you know, like cyan and light blue colors are called to be four lane. You can see towards the east side of the city where we're having larger developments happen, those are gonna need to be expanded to four lane roads. Most of the rest of the city will stay two lane. What we're looking at here is grand road in our future planning, something I did when I sat down with John and then did the impact easy map. Is that in order to get traffic away from two eighty seven. You can't have only one east west road with four seven. So you can see that we put in for a future east west road that apparently will add and another connection point to two eighty seven. That connects all the way over to our developments on the east side of the city. Help bypass four oh seven, alleviate traffic and things better, moving better. With that, you can see that grand road, which is right here. It ends right here today, but we're showing that it will move and connect up to what this future road will be. So with that being said, instead of only bringing a one option, I'm going to give some different options with the thought that. Into the future, we have this plan that grand road should continue to keep moving its way north, which someone agreed by it recently. And we got dedications for one of the two preference, we need to continue to keep this moving north. Um, and it, for a city to flow and have connectivity. You need extra access points, right? You need more than one way to go over the south besides just, um, twenty two sixty four. Now have a access road in grand road, but then also the east and west instead of just four oh seven, you have another feature road there. With that being said. There's the idea that this road needs to expand drastically in the future. I wanted to present options that we can build roads with city standards of the collector streets instead of making it valid. Or when we know that the city's gonna need to spend more funds in the future to align with what the city's planning map is to be. We could also go with one of the two asphalt options. One of just two inch, two inch asphalt on a six inch base, which is very comparable to the residential roads. Probably will have a life of about ten years or so. With the two inch type B on a four inch type B, that gets to an asphalt section that is city standards, which will hold up for a while and. Um, should, should treat the city quite well for a while. You know, succeed the extra cost with the additional four inches of asphalt. Um, and then that gets you to the final one, which is the concrete, uh, going with. Uh, the more extensive option, but that would primarily be. That's gonna be for the life of grand road until the first part is to be prepared as well too. So what I just kind of wanted to present was that we have options to go with here and, um. You know, there's two ways of looking at it, is let's go ahead and as it sounds, we have the funds at the city. To pave it to the concrete section that this type of road should be paved to. Or we can give it a page and ensure that it's, you know, the gravel is taken care of and we don't have that anymore. And I can still on that asphalt section, either the two inch section or the six inch asphalt section. I can still design a turnaround to ensure that the emergency vehicles have the appropriate space to make their turns to get back down the south on great roads or that there's. There's no issues with having fire trucks and that's. So with that, um, John discussed, he would like to get this road finished and designed and bring it to council for bidding. Um, we just kind of need to see how was the council's feelings on what type of section should we move forward with? Um, so that I know how I should design this really. Put together, um.
Sure, that's scary.
Yes.
Are they, are, um, sections is, that no sections, consider my fact, tell my fact?
No, sir.
No.
No, that's been a challenge for us to remember. One side of the street is an infection, one side of the red action, which should never be.
So really, that's. Personally, I have a knowledge of the total. Now, we're, 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 we need to discuss.
Well. But, uh, why don't we have? Uh, now it's one point six million, so there's still more to sit out. We're running back to my work and stuff.
Yeah. I need to listen to that. But I wanted to say something else, we were ready to just, we'll just see the top video. To make this, so make this very, very, very personal. I've had conversations with a couple of developers that were interested in hosting tracks in the ninety south, which is a hill. In wanting to build a single family residential way. in wanting to build a single family residential way. And to inform them, what I told them, look at that, our thorough plan, I said that to dedicate right there the road for that yellow line that goes east and west off of twenty two sixty four and starts to make towards two eighty seven. I will also tell you, if you see find a road goes north of that road, it keeps pulling out the north of that road or it goes rather as a ball of thirty. Jay, let's reverse on the floor.
Or twenty two sixty.
Right, should go probably to forty four twenty one. I will tell you, you're probably aware. White County is working on rare thorough plan. And they asked all the cities for their power thorough plans because they want to see, make sure that whatever they come up with works with the city plan. So the thorough plan last meeting I went to a couple of weeks ago, they do show that east west going across on the other side of two eighty seven, they continue going westward and it's worth like twenty seven one, although that's alright. You also cattle, et cetera. Forward westward all the way out to fifty one. And they show where uh we stopped finding a road, continuing to extend up all the way to forty four twenty one. So they are looking also at connectivity from the counties going to the city as a result. Outside our sacred surface.
Up in the river rising, a lot of them driven there.
Sir, yeah, so yes, sir. So South Carolina Road, it's over to the county western side. They're taking that all the way up to three eighty.
Yeah, that road will extend up to three eighty already, it just stops in the middle of the county.
Right, and but they're looking at a huge like four lane, probably dividing road. They would like to do.
They'd like them all turning to a one hundred six, but it'd be something you would just. Yeah, I don't know if you said very close, easy does like that. Uh they wouldn't probably turn it to something like that, but think of all the traffic and growth that's on one fourteen. They may need a way to be able to get all the way to.
Yeah, I agree with you. So I just wanted to give you that information so that you know, these are just lines on the map, folks. The county is taking our thorough plan seriously. We have been having discussions with the council over the group, if you recall, or I can't spoke with the council. We're looking at adopting this thorough plan to help be sure that we are planning for our future. And it's already coming in handy because as you can see, just in the Chisholm Hills road, you got all that for all that. And at some point, somebody is going to sell and somebody is going to help them that what that is a looking lot because I was going to be able to counsel. But know that whatever that is are being developed, we're going to be asking them to dedicate right away so we can at least connect from twenty two sixty four, start going west to whatever their property going to stop. And now you've got a big chunk and now it's just the matter of going the rest of the way all the way to two eighty seven. And you can now wait up to separate way so that not everybody's going to be all set up particularly in her of the order bit. Will be able to get out of twenty seven a lot quicker than having to come all the way down the whole step.
I have a question, just just from my background and how I always feel like hot here makes sense to me to do that. Uh this one, um I I drive by this road, I started with a balance, but uh I don't I mean, there's a deal off track and what's really on it? I mean, for the amount of money, especially when you say option two, it really doesn't make sense to look at. I mean, for what was put on hot here, that makes out of like a great field to be spread here that, I mean, I'm never. I'm not that fine, but I would, but I'm now, so what's wrong with being that?
So what's wrong with it is we are starting to see, for example, what used to be the volleyball, located the volleyball is now manufacturing. And they're taking a lot of truck traffic because of what they're manufacturing. What all? What is that on there? So they manufacture these rating barrier type of exit building side city homes for car. In fact, they're getting to build a forty thousand square foot uh facility out there on the side as well. It's around fly makers, I think, was it two?
Mm hmm.
Fly maker, yeah. So they're they're already looking at expanding and growing their production. The council has already just sort of that council already approved a total parking storage. And we just wouldn't hear back from them, you know, so they didn't plan to review, but that's already on the books. And so we constantly get inquiries from manufacturing companies that are interested. We may be at building something, some of our long range road, we're just, you know, it was extended extended. So what's happening is that's becoming our manufacturing portal for the city, which is kind of good because we're able to keep them posted as a buffer of a couple of hours and two eighty seven might from the residential uh properties that are further away from that, right? So that makes sense for seeing the plan will continue to expand the manufacturing area, which you're going to need the road.
And what I just put up here is you can see in red, two eighty seven is still that blue line. The red shows commercial, so that's what we've been doing up in the long four oh seven. It's apparently ever gets their water, which we can make long middle strides go to get. There's going to be a lot of commercials, so just on the other side of the commercial on the eastern side of three eighty seven, there's railroad on the same part. Right next to the railroad world, which you want to have your industrial manufacturing. And so with me and the city planners' thought process is let's keep that side that I said we mentioned, the railroad. Let's keep that the manufacturing industry. Because every city, obviously that's the less desired side of the city, but everybody kind of needs that as part of it. It's another tax revenue and different type of tax base that can generally monitor the city. So yeah, with those thoughts, it's obviously the CIP and the industrial or the manufacturing areas aren't completely lining up. But those are room for interpretation as we've talked with future landowners, but you can see how they kind of follow each other. And that's what the whole idea and the thought process, the kind of like Grand Road should turn into.
It should.
And I and I and I love the idea, it's just that we don't have those things or an asset.
Correct.
I'm on the market that is this the best possible of of partners, funds that you're marketing after.
Well, you have these funds earmarked for that project. If the council decides you want to do use those funds as a bigger project, that is your authority, your authority. But it's got to be a road drainage project, in other words, it can't be set to bother the police station or a library like that. So yes, if you can use it, the money's there for this project. If you decide, no, we want to do this project or whatever something else, you have that authority a little bit on the top of your road.
And that's why I wanted to bring three options. I had to bring an option that was very cheap, but we could go with options zero, which is very cheap. As mayor mentioned, that road is probably not going to hold up much, especially if we're going to be asking these areas, which we're so bad right now, to be having a truck tractor in it. So give it five years, eight years or so, two inches of asphalt will probably get the job. That's why we have the goldie lines middle word that it's cheaper than the concrete. It won't last a hundred thirty year lifespan, probably even twenty year time soon to um make it in properly. But that's kind of gives you your options of how how it moves.
I would add, this property here, this property here and this property here, all all the way. Late late times, she has one air because that's not the year. Uh she's something folks heard about in the last few years, she was children and I figured that will end up in some kind of like guilt and soul. And water damage, definitely high like high like, uh, sorry. Because we some charities or something, very, very, it's very difficult to manage.
I think I have a fair, I was attracted to a sense, it's much closer now, it's obviously flash, she was modern, but I agree, but it's something we're looking to do. We've got a question, I don't know, it's something we need to really try to push at this point.
Yeah, I think the reason we want to bring that is now we're looking at here, we have a solution to find a road. This was a previous request of the council that we took bond dollars in all four, the hundred twenty three. And we've had it on our claims that this is now once we get tiny road taken care of, which we are good for done for orders with contractors now. This will be the last city owned road that is still brown. So obviously, that road is not preferred by folks and it has been on plans and it's been previous council members' decision that they wanted to take bond out for this roadway.
Most of these uh are replays, you know, are out, you know, so I mean, to me, I mean, first of all, I'm kind of a lot of the people traveling around, I mean, they have, like, time out there, just going out there, but you need forever.
With that, how often are we putting dollars in maintenance staff in the grand book? I mean, I know you're not going.
It's on a rainfall, but uh it's a good rainy year, three to four times a year.
So it is a maintenance burden in the staff and obviously it's not primary type burden. But it is something that is continuous maintenance from the city, that there are dollars being thrown. Some literally get washed away on a rainstorm, so. But that that, I mean, that is an argument and that's kind of why I wanted to bring all those staged approaches because there's different options that we can move forward with and um if it's the city's desire to try to look at it, it'd be a cheaper option. If we want to say, hey, we do want to show that we're addressing the needs of this roadway. You know, like what we're doing on the south end of Pioneer, I just want to recommend it for the fact that the city is trying to push the manufacturing and this stuff in this direction. And if you just go super cheap at it, we'll do that in two years, ask them to.
So this this is just a warm session.
Correct, yeah.
So those are not actual bays, this is where it's intended to be.
These are my, these were like, let's gather construction costs, um and those were what I want to look. Those were my S S on what a potential project would look like with that.
So actually, they.
Could be more, could be less, um I'd like to give myself a pat on the back that I was right on, I was on the button on the two low bits for finding a road. But some other times, whenever we do other road projects, sometimes they come in two percent higher. When I was, when I took it last week, when I put the asset together, which is really came in about two percent lower. So it's all about the contract and market, it's how hungry and desired is a contract coming to be.
So I know we're all familiar with the talk about the time, the time that hasn't been finished yet, right?
No, man, we're not talking about that, not about house repairs, because we've been having this one of the last days. Those are minimum dollars compared to what we're talking about. So I know, but I was going to say, can we do that for you to finish your time? Well, we can, we would be, I think, short sighted on our part because we didn't apply again for another C P G grant in twenty seven, that's what I'm calling. On our smallest. And we have a good chance of getting Hilltop for water to us at a hundred fifty thousand. So we would be able to use, see you cheap ones and the whole. So but the reason we're having this discussion is that probably knowing of the three point five million bond issues to address the fact that you did that in one free. We completed the project that we said we were going to do on Hilltop, uh yeah, uh Chisholm Hills. We also completed the regeneration project we said we were going to do on Skydome. And there was money in the water and a lot of that. The only project that is left is this project right here, Grand Road. And so again, because Grand Road Pioneer, you're able to pull money from the different parts of money that we have the roads, who put the two projects. I wanted to be sure that we had an understanding of this with the council thinking, well, Grand Road is out there. When we're pulling money out of the Pioneer, to be sure that we have powers covered. So that's why we're having this conversation through the city. And I will tell you that Riley gave pretty accurate on the cost, so the three quotes it gives and they gave you, they're probably going to come in similar to the price of borrowing some major shortage of supplies or economic dollars or whatever, we just believe this is that. Um so just something that probably pretty, pretty close to what the companies.
And I would like to argue also too, uh the wording that was in the bond is that additional money that's left over. What else can someone use that road for money?
So we're allowed to use all the money for similar projects. So if for some reason they don't, the council doesn't want to redo Grand Road, but you want to focus your money on some other city road or roads, like for example, we get to figure out what we're going to pay for rejuvenating some of real watching, right? We're about to probably inherit part mail from the discussion that you will follow with this. If the residents have long gone, they're going to be forward to the plan and paying for the funding that you can provide to the city. So we don't have any money or more. So projects we have, um kind of nature problem with the form of the intersection of South Carolina Road north of that four oh seven, empty judge light. Later this week, uh public ordinance, we're probably wasting a lot of time doing a lot of repairs and heating up. It's just, there's no asphalt left, there's no, you gotta no asphalt left, so we're constantly pulling there. It's possible to get a rate and so projects we have, it's just a matter of those projects are most residential, you know, uh centering, right? The other thing you want to keep in mind is you can only use bond funds for reconstruction or for certain people, road projects.
Oh, okay.
Because unless it's a major rehab, because I don't know what you call that, we do like full.
Full bed reclamation.
There you go, full bed reclamation is more of a problem. When we get over in um Skydome, ran about seventy one grand?
Right around fifteen, fifteen. Yeah. We're we're five thousand, we have to look up a fix, but they were surprised to be forty nine thousand.
You know, so that's more of a problem, right? So you can use money for stuff like that, A nine with this problem. So it's really up to the council, we're just letting you know, this is the last project remaining on a lot of issues in twenty twenty.
I mean, it's previous council. This rocks, we're earmarked, especially to the public, then we're losing seven hundred twenty nine, about six hundred dollars on the watch.
That was that same thing.
So anything, I mean, six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand, I can live with that, but focal pain and talking through an internet that we're doing. This is what this is, we're investing, previous council, we're making previous council flyers. Because they said we were going to do this and we're out of that, we're blessed with that.
But I would be able to, that's a cheaper option, that's not what I was trying to get at.
I think there is traffic.
Yeah, I would, one of the needs to be done right now, like I would, if I had to choose right now, I would say concrete would be the best one because it's more expensive now, it's super raw. And I mean, everyone can save money in the end, but yeah, I just don't think this is something we need to rush to do. Like actually, we can keep that money there available for this, but I don't know, it's something we can do right now.
Well, I hope that you can help, Fred.
That's, we have had people that have talked to the city and they say, well, we want to develop, but we're not going to do that.
Yeah, the worst thing that always comes up is ready to fix, finish fixing the road, you know, finish the road. And we have at least two business owners right now on Grand Road that are constantly reaching out to us saying, when are you guys going to fix this road?
And we told them.
We told them. Well, told them there's money available and the last bond issue was that we would be coming to the council at some point to have that discussion, but we just weren't ready to come now. We had to get these other projects out of the way, this time finished. And so now that that's done, now we're ready to come. So yes, you know, I was saying, I knew this critical, when we want to do that, I just want to get, in full disclosure, I want to give you the information. We have those stupid, they're constantly asking us, we need to finish the road. One of those being this, the person that bought the indoor um oligal, uh that does the manufacturing, those the barrier things. And then of course, we have people that have come to talk to us and said, hey, we're thinking of moving the business down here, but we need to fix the road.
Yeah, but you know, I don't know what to complain, it's something, it's something that's not the best of the lot.
No, I, I, I mean, the current, I was a crap.
If we're going to do a child, it would.
I don't know.
Five layer, we don't have a concrete. And there's a whole lot of traffic.
Yeah, but there's no, there's no, maybe you can draw a chart.
Yeah, but it's really just traffic on that.
It's, it's all something else.
He's got a, I heard, oh, yeah. And then in my record, the next one will be about forty thousand square foot warehouse, that was a team with more sales.
I see other lots of the most term in the United States.
And something I could also bring up is, like, we not just want to take direction, we want to bring this back to life. There's some engineering plans, I need to balance these gears from here to the end of the road. So I just need to know that.
So if, no, keep up.
I think that we definitely should, and I like, I agree that I like, uh, I like option model, great. So what I wanna present is that since we're not going with a very thin option, but with only six inches of base with ten inches of asphalt, except eight inch of cut. Then the other two options are practically about the same thickness, it's either six inches of asphalt or seven inches of concrete, and they both have eight inch base. That doesn't change design in each, what I can present is that we did an alternative for Pioneer Road, so that we can see what the contractors are bidding, and how their pricing came in, and that's how we're waiting, we want the contractor to do all four inches on Pioneer Road, or we wanna see, maybe the first two and how the county do too. So what I can do is we could bid this out as either an asphalt road or a concrete road. The prices can come back, and we can make a decision on, I mean, correct me if I'm way too far off on this, but we can make a decision on what that road would be like. Uh contractors may not like that, because you're gonna get asphalt contractors being like, I wanna do this road, and we get con- concrete contractors saying that. So your bids are probably gonna be quite offside of our two elements, but if we're unsure about that, I can move forward with the design. We can come back again in three months, we can say, all right, we decided we wanted to be asphalt, or we decided we wanted to be concrete, I can do bid it one way or whatever. Or we can do one difficult way, but that is still possible, is I can split up base preparation, everything is there, and then it's either alternative one. We do asphalt, or alternative two, we do concrete, I can bring the compensation back. We know that the pricing is, is it really, you know, is the difference that drastic, you know, if there's, if it goes to nine hundred thousand concrete, you drop down to five hundred fifty thousand asphalt, maybe that helps weigh the decision. If they merge closer together in that gap between option three and option one, get closer, that may weigh even a sweeter opinion on, yeah, and go for concrete when it gets closer to the asphalt. So, the limit is options.
My concern, I know with concrete, is it's very concrete to begin, yeah, this road didn't expand quite up. Concrete lasts three times as long as ever, and.
Much easier to replace, replace them all at a time versus something that can quickly tear out asphalt.
And I know there's not a lot of truckers from now, but they're maybe, we, that's the plan anyway. And we tried to replace it in ten years, I suppose thirty years of concrete, so it's, it's more than that, really, we're saving for the actual ten years of. Not having to replace another asphalt.
True.
But except we can't use some of those, you know, keep them for repairs, we have to do the replacement.
But toward a lot of this, and part of the selling factor in doing this is this gives the IP road that utilizes uh impact fees. So that is the only way that we're able to utilize the fact that you got paid out of debt, is this one road. Uh but committed us. You could build the heads of the sharp tube system, if we'd like, working on this, and put it all in. We need to do, now that it's a twenty twenty three bond, we're moving to five year, twenty six, and so asphalt, put it all on the ladder. So we have it in our, over in our base two, but we're not gonna work it down, but we won't utilize the constant pay out of debt, uh the type of the impact fees, pay out of debt, I'm like, we need to work it in. So like you said, and the road that you're showing, that's a better uh map of coming down here, that is uh big, big impact. Now accounting, care, everyone's looking, and they're calling it repaired, and so I like that. We need to show them that if we are willing to do our end, sort of like fourth, and have a concrete or like an asphalt, is a good start of that. But part of the, you know, do not need to delay it for, just put it like, you know, impact fees, pay out of this debt on the next project.
So these are the, uh, what I was calling. The initial, the initial is a little more about real uses.
Yeah. That keeps our uh taxes, property taxes, that order, because of this road, uh not having to use property taxes, pay it on that debt, we are just.
So we fixed that road, and businesses that are already there are only the actor. And we could easily get other businesses, I mean, that could bring us some taxes and be able to do something.
And now that it's about, I mean, they don't get significantly higher sales tax or, I don't know, we not, they don't get sales tax or management.
We don't, we don't.
Okay, so we're not, I mean, they're not besides property taxes, they're not.
Right, as long as you're there, the law is going up, but, but it is now, so yes. And then once they build that forty thousand square foot facility, that's where you are, it's a commercial property, that's from that side.
No, I understand, but the property tax, or it's a, it says that, so. So it's not that. It's something I, I think we should ignore, it's, it's, it's happening, but. It's just, it's one place that keeps it there, really like, you know, a hundred feet off of the concrete, so it's something, someone's driving, you know, potting their. Their roads are big, I mean, it's a great idea, as a term, so it's not very far away. And that's, besides people who live there, there's nothing else there that could ever.
But I know you're perfect, and it's a day that's.
It's on now, also, so we're gonna do.
I'm not saying.
The, these are the ones that were taken, and it's a massive, and there's a lot of hostages.
I'm not saying that, I just don't know that now is the right time.
I think the, or it's, I think it's, sorry.
We can put it off, we were just working on our progress, that's what I learned from that.
Well, true, so the city's issue bonds, and for that, it's, you know, the laws, so three point five, a lot of bond issues for city number size. Um, not all projects, they done at the same time, so there's a sequencing. And so obviously, Chisholm Hills was a priority, that's me very clear, you gotta finish Chisholm Hills, for there, because those folks were waiting since the first bond issue, so we got our assignment and that's what we concentrated on. Get that one wrapped up, we either, we need something described, you, you had the money, you had a good bid, when we move forward with that one, so we did that part. But now that it was done at this part, that's why it's taken two years for us to come back to you, to have a conversation based on the bid.
No, that's why the American city not, not doing.
Correct, yes, correct. Right, but now, now we're at a point it's like, okay, so besides finding the road, we don't really have another road project other than Grand Road that is still outstanding.
So, well, there's difference in, with the law, law, you know, the law of all places. President was seventy thousand, matter of fact, the president was two point six. And all they did was break some cheese in there, change it, it's a good thing. The president was seventy thousand, two point six.
Didn't you say like this word first, or like that first?
Well, he, yes, the.
They started to prove.
And how, it's more of this, where this location bad.
So, and now we're, and this is just a work session, we're just talking it over. We could also just move forward and ensure that the engineering players are ready to go for bid, just because we moved forward a little bit, John. And I can finish them around the February timeframe. That's, so again, are y'all ready to go to bid and work, or do we have the ready, so that when the council feels appropriate, you can?
Yes, we would.
Right, that's the difference of the Pioneer, I had always that Pioneer ready, the developer said, hey, we need this to be paid. John was able to work out the details behind it and bring options to the city to probably get the funding though. We always have that in our back pocket, we're ready to play the, the construction part immediately. We couldn't do that with Grand Road right now, because we don't have it. That's another something.
But we can move forward.
We could be going, the direction is to perform the engineering, if we don't feel comfortable, and then we could, you know, well, we just, do we do this now, or do we just wait a little bit, you know, at least wait a bit, right?
Right, so.
Yeah, but I say, I know your plans and.
In the document, sir.
Right, so we need the plan to be able, so it's a good document, so at the end of the day, we're gonna need the plan for it, so. At a minimum, I would hope that the council says, uh, just go ahead and move forward, and let Riley finish up, so let Riley ask you, but we have, we have no real lines, it's all, it's a line, right? Some of the road type property, too far, we're gonna have to readjust the, the project for it, so. We have, we're gonna do that anyway, it would be better if we go ahead and get it done sooner rather than later. And then again, we are happy to go out and put big documents out whenever you're ready for us, and again, all we need is do you want us to do it in big documents for asphalt, do you want to produce big dollars in concrete, or do you want to do big documents for hole, like you said? And we can bring you that hole, and then at that point, we can decide what you wanna spend money on.
So John was right there with, having discussed this, is that, um, it's kind of hard to see, I measured right there sixty foot. That's basically the right way, it's from that person's fence on the east side to where there's the edge of the roadway. It's not centering, so it needs to be shifted and centered through the, what called the right way. Right now, this sports facility that we're talking about, that they brought the mechanic, the, the machines in, and they're gonna build that forty thousand square foot. Technically, right now, the road is inside of their property, so that needs to be adjusted and fixed at one point, uh anyways. So that's that, that's what the engineer thinks you do, is create an alignment that actually fits within, like, actual book of our things. Um, any other questions on that, we have one more discussion after this road.
So, just to be clear, we're, we're gonna go ahead and move forward with, that coming up at the correct time, with Grand Road. Uh and then, when we're done, we'll just let you guys know, and then we can decide, um, if you're gonna wanna put a figure on it, or not, and like, go ahead. That's correct, right?
Cool, let's go. Okay, so we're shifting gears to the next topic. Do you have any preference of any of this, or can I just?
Well, just real quickly, so remember, Hilltop Trail was part of that three point five, um, million dollar bond issuance that was done with this base two of Chisholm Hill, but a portion of Hilltop was done as part of phase one, which was awarded to the contractor, Jacob Pulpum. And we actually have one of these issues as part of phase one, Jacob Pulpum, the show, we're gonna talk about that, right, slide the show.
Um, it's not part of this discussion, but uh.
Well, it's all, we're gonna like, oh, we're the best guy. Right, correct, we can't leave it on that.
Correct, yes.
So, understand that we're having some issues throughout Chisholm Hills, only in certain locations. And it just so happens that, you know, I talked about two that were bad, with the most recent, maybe, but there's also one other one, real close to that middle one. Uh that was from page one, it's different contract, and that.
And to preface this, it is, the main objective of the discussion here is that, um, there's these failure happening, and we, we watched all the lab reports, the densities, and we had an inspector out there watching the construction, and the two areas that are failing have failed within like eighteen months of the road being done, and the amount of failure that is present right now, that doesn't just happen for a road, an asphalt roadway, so. With showing that we had tests, that the base was, you know, proof, proof roll was subgrade, the base was broadened, and oxygen densities and moisture contents. The asphalt mixes came in with their passing designs, and we have all the reports showing that everything came in the way it was supposed to. That kind of leaves me and the inspector kind of clueless, I mean, like, how else is this happening? So what my, what my objective from this is, is that I've already reached out to the geotechnical meter, and I would like for them to come out and do that like ten foot depth core samples, so that we can see what's happening below just the ten inches that we touched, because we really only messed with ten to twelve inches of road right here. But we have another nine foot of road that is doing something that's causing failures here. So as John mentioned, this was, don't you have any ideas? I think that it's a very high water table, because of everything else that's around here, the drainage is very funky, and elevation's changed very weirdly. It's almost both of these are weirdly at like high points where there's not drainage, and it almost feels like the water flows through the open channels through the neighborhood, and there's water flowing underground that almost mimics where it's going, and where these two locations are. Almost feel like the water's being poured through the earth while the channels are flowing, which I'm not much of a geologist, and get that far deep into the soils and stuff, so I don't know if that could help works, but I've heard of stuff like this happening in other instances.
Okay, or back more with, with the, what are.
These, I, these are the, so, so these are the photos, this part of Hilltop was one of the last sections that was done. And it was done in late spring in twenty twenty four, but we're right at about eighteen months. Roads like this, if it was just a subgrade failure, this starts happening in years, twelve, fifteen, seventeen, like. This doesn't happen in seventeen months, it happens in seventeen years. This is a very tightly trapped portion of Hilltop Trail, where practically everybody is driving through it. So fortunately, it's holding together and developing cobbles, however, who knows what this weather's gonna look like, I know it's like ninety degrees tomorrow, but it feels a little like very cold. But if, for some reason, have a very bad weather where it freezes and thaws and freezes and thaws. These cracks in this asphalt right now, next spring are gonna turn into.
It might have to be a tiny car or ten minutes, but that's gonna be a fracture.
And whenever the road already feels like this, they each have the moisture that gets in there and freezes, and then it spares, and if it's hot and it keeps going like that, they just start breaking off, and we can follow it, like, so. We want to try to address this before, you know, it, it becomes a very major thing, but as you can see, these do not look good. Um, even if it was poor workmanship, I don't think you could make a road fail this badly, but.
Very hot.
Certain roads have a section like this.
And it was called, it was because the irrigation was broken at the top of the hill, and it was running underneath the pavement, and they finally found the broken, there was a broken valve that was constantly leaking for like eight months, and it's because of water. The only thing that I can believe this could be is some type of water, on the top, right on the right, the top of the photo, you can see car road right there. It's kind of close to a culvert, but there's still a lot of elevation change that, um, this isn't, I don't think it's because of poor, poor bit like drainage, um.
That's right, right, right.
One of them's right here, is right in this area, so you can see it's removed away from the actual, um, culvert, and as you come over this curve, you can see that it, it starts to drop, so here, it's, it's right about right here, I'm glad that, you know, this new image shows the new pavement. It's somewhere right in this area, a hundred, if you see, there it is, it's the first spot of it in December of twenty twenty four. So in six months, it started showing up like that.
Oh, it's working.
So what I'm thinking is that something coming from this way, it's kind of following the, the culvert, the channel in the culvert over here. Something is pulling water through here that is affecting the subway. And before I request that we go and do like these detolling, and do all this stuff, and spend whatever amount of money on it, I got a geotech to get a quote that they will go and do three core samples for, it's eighty six hundred, I think, uh either eighty six or eighty one. So for eighty hundred dollars, we can try to do some more investigative research to try to see what could this be? That's what I wanna, what we'll see is, how loose are those soils from like two foot to eight foot? What's going on there? Are we dating a water table with this in place?
Who's responsible for this?
Um, it was, I mean, it, it's.
And there's a tower road, so it's our responsibility. We can talk with the contractor, see if, once we figure out, if it's subways, like Riley's saying, the public is, there's nothing that the contractor is obligated to do, because that's outside of the work. Plus, we have the test results from the lab, along with our public inspector, so former six dot guy for Westwood now, who knows about roads. And everything that they were supposed to do compaction wise, it's passed, so the contractor can put it back on us and say, hey, I've got my results. Then you were expecting, everything passed, so this is outside of my workmanship, so it's really our responsibility, now. I'm hoping that, if we figure out that some sort of subbase issue we're gonna have to address, then depending on what they did and the cost, we'll come back to our council, if you guys say, yes, let's fix it, and I'm hoping that we'll go back to the contractor and say, look, we're gonna fix the subbase. And I'm hoping that we'll go back to the contractor and say, look, we're going to fix the subbase. If you can come back and help us with the base and the asphalt. Then, you know, we might be able to get it to pay for all or most of those costs when it comes to us. But really, at the end of the day, it's going to be difficult for us to be able to put this onto the contractor because of the fact. Everything that he was supposed to do, we did. We're dealing with some. Difficult spots in Chisholm Mills, including if you can show them at some point where that shovel is starting to slide because of the value of engineering that we have to do. For phase one. So if you recall, during the first part of issuance of three million dollars. The city was running out of money quick because I don't know how they determined that three million dollars was the amount that was needed for the Chisholm Hills project that was woefully under.
Wow, I know everything about. And we also did it right after the COVID.
So it's okay. So there you go. They gave me, they gave me, it's something that our control is hard, but they're responsible. So they started doing some value of the period again, the benefit of having Riley here is he was involved in that project back in the day. I wasn't here. But he did say this is one of those areas where we didn't even have money to pay the the contractor at the time to even come in and start doing compaction. Everything's more base and do a compaction. So they just laid asphalt on it, hoping it would collapse. But as you can see, it's very spied.
This picture is not doing the justice. Yeah, you can see how steep this person's driveway is, but yeah, there's no base work or compaction here and we just laid two inches on top of what was there already. And this is sliding off and falling down. So um. That's something we'll also be able to look into and see about getting repairs on right now, but really what this discussion was is. Um just kind of getting the repair. We need to continue to flip it and figure out a solution out with adjustments to it. A major, major issue. Um and so that's what mainly, yes, this was a location that John and I and Josh will keep our eyes on and come up with a solution. But I think it's probably from the edge of this driveway until we can figure out it's not sloping anymore. We're going to need to pull everything out, remove about two foot and compact it properly and get it compacted so that it's not loose soil. It's just falling. Continue this to fall off the edge of which left. But um what the main. Presentation of tonight was to talk about these two locations that have these um. I would like to have the others work with John to insert into an agreement with this geotech. So that he can get these samples. He's going to do three. He's going to do one at each of the two failing locations. And I'm going to show them a location that I feel had very good compaction and such and use as like a. A sample and we'll we'll get us, we'll get a core sample, a ten foot there so that the miller it looks like what a good location should be and then compare it to the other two. And what I assume we're going to find is in that three to eight foot range, probably very loose soils. And very fine loose soils, which is what is probably getting washed away, which is creating a bunch of uh shrinking and swelling or swelling and shrink, yeah. Sorry, I'm sorry to make. Uh but obviously you'll know what happened to such a soil zone there. So when it rains and that water table falls through, it wants to swell up, it dries out super quick and it shrinks back in. And when you move like that on a roadway, it it just can't keep up with it. And that's really the only thing I can think of in this area. That's what's up here.
Try to, just try to grab the problem before we're being.
Again, that's why we don't want to just tear something up and try to do something.
And I don't.
We don't think that's a problem.
I don't feel confident enough to start guessing and saying, here's how it is fixed. I think that having a geotech that is more experienced in analyzing soils will help me be able to give a recommendation to John and Josh. To be able to fix it and fix it correctly so that this is no longer a third time we have to, you know.
Cross the papers, going towards right, right? So we need to do it the right way, but make sure we don't have.
Yeah, so that was clearly on us. And I'm like, I'm like, you know, he's got watch.
So we aren't going to like that.
Kind of a photograph. But remember again, luckily we had some loans come in under, we've talked about it more. So we've got, as you heard earlier. We have some money in our CIP block, not continuing Grand Road already. We've got money in our CIP which needs to be financed right now. It's always good to have something like that even more back pocket.
It seems like we need a lot of.
Yeah, true.
Is there, is there a buddy that did a quest loss pursuit or something like that?
Yeah, and and if it turns out, it turned out there and he just something.
If it turns out that, because I didn't think the water line is on the south side of this road, if it turns out that we. Find something that there are leaky joints in these areas from their water lines and that is what's causing the excess of water underneath the road, then. We got a lot of things that we will fix.
Best coverage.
Like this, I was saying, I don't think that's what this is. Oh, I guess something else I thought of is I'm I'm sorry, John, but I kind of forgot about this falling off shelf location. I feel more confident that I know what happened here and how we can address this. However, I think I pulled through just two of the core samples and it was seventy eight hundred for two or three for eighty six hundred. Would we want to look at anything about two point four for this location? Or we should, you know, like just seeing what this is. That's what the the extra one was at eighty hundred dollars. So I assume I didn't afford one for eighty hundred dollars. The the majority of the cost is when driving all the way up here, creating a recorder, doing the samples. Pulling them out of the ground and analyzing each one from the lab is.
Is this different? I definitely agree.
I recall, I recall the day I was called about this. Um. Let's just say that your contractor called me and asked me a question, said that I was going to say it's only one master face work here. I said, okay. I said, I didn't, I didn't, I hope they were not, John, but um they're, yeah, they were changing the plans without engineering consent, which I.
Because they go separate.
That's uh not approved. So point of wise is that we were running short on funds and there was some pressure from the council of why is this project still turning out and. We just wanted to pay it. We did not know that was going on. So that was kind of fine, fine.
But you know, do you have some questions over there?
I do not think so, but also. Takes them six thousand dollars to come out there. I think. As this, yeah, and it's how I'm thinking. I do not think that's appropriate to be done here, but I just wanted to bring that up that I forgot to. I think I go quite often in more of this, you know, here, how we can really that that also was done in twenty twenty one. Um as opposed to the other road we've done this week in twenty twenty four. So you can see. It is falling off the, you go see it in person, it's a bit more alarming and shocking, but um. I think I know, I mean, we can, I feel more confident with giving an opinion of how to do more of a prepared bad section. Versus the other two, we've tried to sit and discuss and figure out how it would happen and I'm kind of lost in words of how it really feels actually.
Are you confident you're going to do this?
Correct, yes, I I totally.
We don't technically need the.
The four month. I was I was reading out the four month. I am.
So when I say already, I'm going to the big core samples and we'll come back to that. It's a chance to. And I say, if I say we say that, you put it up.
Okay, I work at a, that's a, this is a, over. That it looks.
I was beat up for us.
Ten minutes.
Ten ball. We're going to fix up the hot foot with the jack.
We talked about canceling meetings once you get on the agenda. I would never have a part of short meeting.
We have lots of, yeah, I think that's a, it's a. Well, we have done.
We got the emotional, I made the emotional return. That was second. She said she did before.
Oh, but uh. Thank you, Ben. We're done. We appreciate it.